Neil Cowan, woman needs to wait. Do the voice shake it now? 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 Say. Say the better say now. Say. Say the better say. Neil Cowan, woman needs to wait. Then he said, give your soul to me now. And I will give you everything you need. Say the better say. Say, say the better say now. My son and listen carefully. If you. Say, say the better say now. My son and listen carefully. If you. Just out feeding my child, I swear. You will live eternally. Neil Cowan, woman needs to wait. Then he said, give your soul to me now. And I will give you everything you need. Say, say the better say now. My son and listen carefully. If you. Just out feeding my child, I swear. You will live eternally, eternally. Neil Cowan, woman needs to wait. Then he said, give your soul to me now. And I will give you everything you need. Then he said, give your soul to me now. And I will. Neil Cowan, woman needs to wait. Then he said, give your soul to me now. And I will give you everything you need. If you. Just out feeding my child.
Minutes in sixty seconds. Good evening, councillors. Thank you. I stand to open the ordinary council meeting on the nineteenth of September twenty twenty three at seven oh six P M. I'll now ask councillor D'Souza to read the acknowledgement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to acknowledge that we're meeting on the land of the Bidgegal and Gadigal peoples who occupy the Sydney coast, being the traditional owners. On behalf of Randwick City Council, I acknowledge and pay my respects to the elders, past and present, and to Aboriginal people in attendance today.
Thank you, councillor D'Souza. Councillor Rosenfeld, read the prayer.
Oh, mighty God, we humbly beseech you to bestow your blessings upon this council and to direct and prosper our deliberations to the advancement of your glory and the true welfare of the people of the city of Randwick in Australia. Amen.
Thank you. Councillors, before you're seated, I would like to to announce to the meeting and the public the sad passing of a former Randwick councillor and mayor, Mr. John Scullion. John passed away peacefully on the second of September twenty twenty three, aged ninety one, listening to his favourite music and with family holding his hands. John was a fixture of Randwick Municipal Council back then and was a former mayor of Randwick. And on behalf of all of council, I'd like to pass on our deep condolences and have a minute of silence. Later in the meeting, there will be a merril minute acknowledging his contribution to the city of Randwick. Thank you, councillors. You can now please be seated. I call for apologies and leaves of absence. I have a request to join via audiovisual link from councillor Pandefini, who is joining due to illness. No motion is required. Thank you. Can I please have, actually, there being no further councillors attending by audiovisual link, no motion is required. Can I please have a councillor move the confirmation of the minutes, beginning with the ordinary council meeting on the twenty second of August twenty twenty three? Moved councillor Burst, seconded councillor Rosenfeld. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Can have somebody move the minutes of the extraordinary meeting on the twenty ninth of August twenty twenty three? Moved councillor Hay, seconded councillor Luxford. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Just before we begin, councillor Pandefini, could you just check that you can hear us and that we can hear you? Could you just make some noise?
Hi.
Thank you. All right, no worries. Councillors, are there any declarations of pecuniary and non-pecuniary interests? Councillor Hamilton. Sorry, councillor Nielsen. My apologies. The curse has returned.
I need to declare a non-significant non-pecuniary interest in item CP thirty three stroke twenty three, Randwick Junction Planning Proposal. As the directors of the board on the Randwick Club are known to me through my involvement in the Australian Labor Party. I'm currently a member of the club. I do not participate in the management administration or any other activities of the Randwick Club to any extent which would give rise to the perception of a particularly strong affiliation. I have not received a reportable or non-reportable donation within the last four years. I also note that I know the speaker who's listed for date for tonight, who is speaking against the proposal just because through my Randwick association in the community. I also need to declare a significant pecuniary interest in item N M sixty four stroke twenty three, the notice of motion from councillor Beach. Act of super, ASIC investigation, as I'm a member of the Superannuation Fund Act of Super, I will not be taking part in the debate or voting on the matter.
Thank you. Before I go to the next, my apologies for that earlier. We have a hand up from councillor Hay. Councillor Hay?
With regard to notice motion sixty four twenty three, I declare a non-significant non-pecuniary interest. Through my work with Epic Global, I have been involved in it as a usual third party in the matter of ASIC and Union Standard, N S D twenty sixty four of twenty nineteen, as a matter before the Honourable Justice Wigny of the Federal Court, which is pending judgment to protect the integrity of that decision as well as allow for the possibility that may work on future matters. I will not be making any comments on ASIC or the Federal Court and will therefore not participate in or vote in the matter.
Thank you. Councillor Luxford? Okay, councillor Chappell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just on C S thirty eight twenty three, just declaring a non-significant non-pecuniary interest. My partner is a former player of the AFL Randwick Saints Club. And on C O forty seven twenty three, just to say that I worked extensively in my day job on the reforms to the Public Interest Disclosures Act, but I don't think that impacts in any way the application of the final product of that act. I'll be voting on both of those matters.
Thank you. Councillor Wilson, do you have any declarations? Councillor Seet, do you have any declarations?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. CP thirty three slash twenty three, non-significant non-pecuniary interest. The directors of the board of the Randwick Club are known to me. I am currently a member of the club. I do not participate in the management, administration or any other activities of the Randwick Club to any extent which would give me the rise of perception of particularly strong affiliation. I have not received a reportable, non-reportable donation in the last four years. I will be participating in the matter. CP thirty three slash twenty three, non-pecuniary, non-significant. Dr. Brian Jarvey and Kay Jarvey are known to me as they were my father's and my, and my father and I were once patients. I will be voting on the matter. N M sixty three slash twenty three, significant but non-pecuniary. At my place of employment, Mr. Ted Singh is my direct manager, therefore I will not be voting on the matter.
Thank you. Councillor D'Souza?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would like a non-significant non-pecuniary interest on the matter where Dr. Jarvey's speaking on, or Kay speaking on, as I know them and through my professional contacts, being a respiratory specialist. But I will be voting on the matter. The other one, of course, is councillor Rosenfeld's notice of motion on the former mayor, Ted Singh. As you know, Mr. Mayor, I served with Ted and was on the council with him again, a non-significant, non-pecuniary interest, but I will also be voting on the matter. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have a non-significant, non-dec, non-pecuniary interest declaration in relation to the Randwick Junction Planning Proposal, as the directors of the board of the Randwick Club are known to me through their separate individual involvements in the Australian Labor Party. To the best of my knowledge, I do not believe that I am currently a member of the Randwick Club. I may have been in the past. I do not participate in the management administration or any other activities of the Randwick Club to any extent which would give rise to the perception of a particularly strong affiliation. Moreover, I have not received a reportable or non-reportable donation in the last four-year period. I request that the full disclosure be recorded in the minutes. Are there any further declarations, councillor Luxford?
So I have a non-significant, a non-pecuniary for CP thirty three twenty three. The members of the board of the Randwick Club are known to me through my affiliation with the, in involvement with the Australian Labor Party. I am not a member of the Randwick Labor Club and have not been for more than ten years. And I have received no donations or anything of the kind from the club in the last two elections.
Thank you. Are there any further declarations? There being no further declarations, I will take declarations at any point during the debate if you would like. Okay, thank you, councillors. We now move to addresses from the public. I will read a chairperson's announcement. In respect to the Privacy and Personal Information Protection Act, members of the public are advised that the proceedings of this evening's meeting will be recorded for the purposes of clause five twenty to five twenty three of Randwick Council's Code of Meeting Practice. Audio video recordings of meetings are prohibited without the express permission of council and a person may be expelled from the meeting for using or having used an audio video recorder without the express authority of Randwick Council. All members of the public addressing tonight's meeting have a maximum of four minutes in which to put forward their case with no extensions available, presenters will be stopped. When the four-minute period has expired, councillors may however ask questions of the presenters at the end of each public submission. For the member of the public who will be addressing this evening, you are under no obligation to answer the questions if you do not see, do not wish, so feel free. We now move to addresses of the meeting by members of the public and the first speaker I have is. Thank you. In relation to CP thirty three slash twenty three, Randwick Junction Planning Proposal, speaking against the proposal is Ms. Kay Jarvey.
I'm grateful for the opportunity to address the meeting. My husband and I are the owners of Sixty High Street Randwick, which is proposed to be a contributory building when the Randwick Junction Town Centre Planning Proposal is on public exhibition. When council is making the final decision whether Sixty High Street should remain a contributory building in the Randwick Junction Town Centre, we would like council to be aware of the reasons why we are objecting to Sixty High Street being a contributory building. Sixty High Street has been significantly altered from its original form. The previous owners replaced the slate roof with tiles and removed the chimneys. Thirty-eight years ago, for council to approve our building as a surgery, we had to create a driveway. Therefore, the main room of the building was reduced in size by two metres. The side gable and the side verandas were also removed. Due to the age of the building, we've had to replace the intricate woodwork and the facade of the building with less detailed woodwork due to the lack of a specialised tradesman in the area. As a result of movement in the building, large cracks appeared in six marble steps and those steps were replaced with new marble steps. At a meeting with council officers, we were advised to obtain a heritage report and a structural engineer's report. And as Mayor Parker agreed with that suggestion, we purchased those reports. The heritage architect, James Phillips, with over thirty years' experience, stated in his report that Sixty High Street does not meet the threshold for listing as a contributory item. And I have a copy of that report with me. The structural engineer's report included details in relation to cracks and movement in the building, supported by photographs by Mr. Marcio Portis, the structural engineer, who has worked in the construction industry for over thirty years. After council received the heritage report, we met with Mayor Parker and two council officers and James Phillips, the heritage architect, was also at that meeting. Page thirty eight of council's agenda for today's meeting refers to the heritage review. However, we have not had a meeting with Mayor Parker or any council officer in relation to the structural report we submitted to council. And therefore, in any documentation for public exhibition in relation to Sixty High Street, we are requesting council to specifically mention we did purchase, did purchase a structural report. Since the construction of the light rail, there has been and continues to be significant damage to our building. A patient, Mr. Michael Gama, wrote a letter to the general manager on the twenty seventh of July. The letter states, I have been Dr. Jarvey's patient for many years. Since the construction and operation of the light rail, I have observed, have observed a lot of damage to the building. There are cracks throughout the building and doors are jamming. These problems were not there before the construction of the light rail. You can even feel the vibrations from the light rail in the property as the trains change across the lines in front of the building. On the eleventh of November twenty twenty, we were notified by council that any future development of our site would be an eight-story building height and further council records confirm that information. However, in May twenty twenty three, we learnt the council's proposal is for Sixty High Street to be a contributory building in the Randwick Junction Town Centre, thereby excluding any future development of the site. Do we need extra accommodation in the area? The answer to this question is best provided by the council's doctors.
I move a two-minute extension. Thank you.
I don't need two minutes. Thank you for that. The answer to this question is best provided by the council's doctors, nurses and clerical staff working at the Randwick Health Campus comprising four major hospitals. Thank you for the chance to speak.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the speaker? There being no questions of the speaker. Thank you very much. There being no further speakers or addresses from the public, what we will now do, including for those who are um listening uh online, is we will move down the business paper in order, uh beginning with merril minutes. We will run through the merril minutes, including uh these, those contained on the supplementary, uh business paper, and then I will deal with urgent business and then deal with the items on the paper as listed.
Sorry, just before you do that in line with uh what I was advised to do by Mister Brownlee, can I please withdraw, item N M sixty seven twenty three?
Okay, thank you. Councillor Chappell has withdrawn N M sixty seven twenty three, which is the notice of motion in relation to, that South Marubra Surf Club. Okay, thank you. Um uh all right, um we'll now move via merril minutes. Um uh beginning with M M thirty nine slash twenty three, code red, code blue, homeless uh emergency response plans. Uh councillors, I take it that you have read the merril minute? Um uh a- as, you you would all be aware, homelessness and the, and um the pretty diabolical combination of extreme weather, um is a responsibility on all of us in terms of being able to address that. Um I take uh this uh merril minute as read, uh and I'd like to thank former uh Mayor Sullivan for actually raising this as a proposal with me, um and um and alluding me to this uh particular campaign. I commend the merril minute uh to the floor. Um uh I actually saw councillor Olive, and then I'll go to councillor Hamilton. Councillor Olive?
Yes, so I have an amendment to the, the merril minute. Um uh Mister Kelly, if we could have that up. Um the, the amendment goes like this, if I can find it. Um that I just add a part D to that, just to say, uh because I think this is a great, you know, sort of um uh motion, you know, sort of, and I think given, given that um uh, El Nino has been announced today, you know, sort of, it's very, very timely. Um but part D says, you know, sort of, a request of report be brought back outlining council's current homelessness, homelessness mitigation strategies and into having a homelessness action plan, aimed at reducing homelessness in the L G A. So this is a more systematic kind of uh addition to this. And I was just wondering whether, you know, sort of, that would be accepted.
Thank you. I I will accept it and incorporate it um in full uh as a additional point D. Um there being no amendment, I'll then now go to councillor, Hamilton, and then I'll, I saw councillor Sid. Um councillor Nielsen, did you have a wish to, no, that's fine. So I'll go to uh Hamilton then Sid.
I um, so I have a comment, a question, and I have an amendment as well. So in February twenty nineteen, Michael Daley, the member for Maruba, your employer, scoffed at the New South Wales Liberal Government's attempts to reduce homelessness problem, quoting homelessness shouldn't be a partisan issue or part of an election campaign. In March twenty nineteen, Michael Daley, your employer, pledged forty million dollars, in increased funding for homelessness services in his election promise. The states and territory governments are primarily responsible for housing and homelessness. And currently, Randwick City Council has an emergency action plan that follows the state government's lead. So there's homelessness on one hand, and then there's the emergency action plan on the other. And there are two different ministers that look after those two different issues. Did you know that the number one cause of homelessness is domestic violence? And so you're putting up a um motion about extreme heat and extreme cold, but in one hundred and sixty seven years of Randwick municipality, we haven't had an extreme cold or extreme heat event, that would initiate an emergency action plan. However, we do have domestic violence happening weekly, daily and hourly right here in Randwick. So my question is, are you submitting this homelessness motion on behalf of your employer, Michael Daley? Or are you submitting it on behalf of yourself? Because I quite strongly object to the avenue taken to combine homelessness, which is, as I said, a state portfolio for a minister, and um emergency uh emergency action plan procedures. Because as a state issue, I think um it's highly conflicted.
Thank you, uh councillor Hamilton. Um I'm happy to answer the question. What I would like, if possible, is I'd like to see the text of what it is that you're seeking to move. The reason why.
Through to.
Oh the.
Yeah, I had some problems trying to get it through.
No, that's right. No, um I'll explain the reason why. Um the reason uh why, wa- was it in relation to whether or not it's directly referencing my employing, um the, the employing minister, um o- of mine, at which point, if that were to be the case, I would actually absent myself from the chair. Um ha- yeah, okay, review in line.
So that's right. So my, my amendment, what I'm, what I'm trying to do with this amendment is, direct our attentions to the emergency response plan, which we are responsible for as a council. And I'm s- and I'm suggesting that we liaise with the emergency services minister's office, the Honourable Jihad Dib.
Yep. Um I actually don't have any objection to incorporating, this particular amendment into my motion, review its emergence in line with any all changes to the New South Wales Government, that is fine, I would accept. Uh liaise with the emergency services ministers offered to ensure Randwick's could commit something. Yes, I would accept that. Bring back a report outlining proposals for both planning and local emergencies for extreme weather events inside of the Randwick L G A. Um Mister Kelly, um I would accept all items of that amendment and incorporate that into the merril minute. Um. All right, thank you.
And so, so just in relation to.
So actually, I might answer your question as well. Um in relation to your question, um I've had no discussions with my um employer, and I don't think he'd be aware that this is on the business paper.
Okay, so the, the concern that I have is that we are bundling two very, very uh different and significant, issues into one. And what we should be doing is addressing the homelessness issue. And as I said, the number one cause is domestic violence, so that's first. And the emergency action plan itself, or our emergency response plan, should be reviewed, most definitely because we've had a change in government. So I, I agree with that and I agree with the initiatives there. But when it comes to homelessness, I think that we should look at uh the, the major causes. And as I said, in a hundred and sixty seven years, we haven't had, a major heat wave or a cold snap that would cause us to initiate an emergency action plan. So, and and, you know, in state government, there are two separate ministers that look after these two very important portfolios. So combining them at a local government level, I would caution that this is, potentially quite irresponsible. We should be separating them out. We should be addressing the emergency um response plans, separate from any housing or homelessness issue because it is such a big issue.
Can I, can I just confirm, are you suggesting that your amendment is in conflict with point B?
I am. I'm suggesting that my amendment is a replacement of all of what you have had in your merril minute.
Okay, so I'm happy to incorporate all words, not to substitute. Um so i- if you, if you do wish to move the amendment as separate, um that, that's fine. I'm happy to incorporate it. In a, in addition, because I think that there is a question around homelessness as well as emergency service response. Um a- and and the reasons why, I, I suspect that in um corresponding with one and not the other, um there would be a view that they, they would refer components of it to, to the other, and I think it's more appropriate to deal with both. And I think um your amendment is a, quite a constructive amendment and hence why, um uh was willing uh to accept it in addition to, rather than in substitute of. Um however, that's, i- if you'd still like to move it, that's, that's a matter for you.
As I said, I do believe that what we're doing here is we're bundling two very, very different and important, issues that at a state level. How have I got his finger stuck in the button? Um at a state level, they have two ministers, they have, it whole office, two separate offices that look after homelessness and emergency um response, emergency services.
Yep. Okay, um.
And I do think that there, there is a less than ideal coincidence that the member from Maruba, who you work for, has also put homelessness on his election pledge.
Um oh, o- o- okay, um it being a proposed amendment, is that correct? Do you still seek to move it? I just, I just need to confirm that, yes? Do, do I have a second, moved seconded by councillor Burst? Just to confirm for the purpose of the meeting, is the uh amendment is to substitute all words um above it, um with the proposed amendment, moved Hamilton Burst. Um there was a hand up on the amendment. Um yes, councillor Veach, your, your question?
Uh thank you. Uh oh look, I was just, perhaps you could speak to uh some of the information contained in the background, which seems to sort of, give more information about why these two uh issues are being uh, developed or requested to be developed into a plan um, regarding the homeless memorial service request. Are you able to provide a bit more background information on that, please?
Um the background behind the campaign as it relates to the homeless memorial service request, um, it called for the development of a uniform national protocol. I think it's a pretty reasonable one. Um what um the experience both internationally um and locally is that extreme weather events, um particularly in Australia of heat waves, um but around the world disproportionately affect homeless people. Um experiences throughout Europe and um United States around extreme cold, um uh it shows that, you know, having a coordinated approach, um in, in relation to that has the ability to actually quite significantly save lives. Um the presence of this particular campaign is that there, there is no coordinated local government strategy, uh around that, um looping in with other tiers of government. So I think it's a pretty reasonable request in that campaign. Thank you. Are there any further speakers on the amendment moved? Uh Hamilton Burst. There being no further speakers on the amendment, Hamilton. So councillor Burst as the second, did you wish to speak to the amendment? My apologies. Yeah, i- it includes the addition. Um so.
Um listen, I, I'd like to foreshadow that um if this is not get up, then we uh move it as a, um th- then we uh try to incorporate it into the motion if, if the amendment fails.
Um well, a- as previously stated, I will accept that if, if moved. Um okay, just to confirm, councillor Hamilton, um that your proposed amendment is on the screen, and that is to substitute all of the above words.
That's correct.
Thank you, thank you. There being no further speakers on the amendment, I'll now put the amendment. Uh all those in favour? All those against? I declare the amendment lost. Uh councillor Hay, if you'd like to suggest it, I'll incorporate it.
I suggest we uh incorporate uh the um motion, is it the amendment, the full, the full amendment as originally made. Councillor Hamilton as points uh E, F and G.
Thank you very much, councillor Hay. I'll now incorporate it. Um are there any further speakers on the uh now um amended motion? Um there being no further. Yes, yes, yes. Uh councillor Sid.
Mr. Mayor, I just, I just, um regarding point D, I have no issues with it at all, but I just, I just think it implies, and I'm not trying to remove it, but I'd just like to outline that, it's sort of in some ways imply that we don't actually do anything with homeless people and we don't have an action plan and we don't do a lot. And I'd just like to, um however, um as community services will know, that, our community service officers do a fantastic job. And they have for years been doing audits. They actually try to find homes for the homeless people. They actually work their, excuse my French bums off to try to help these people. And they've been doing it in a silent way. And unfortunately, uh for a councillor such, they do it in such a way that they're so committed, they just do it because they want to help rather than they want the accolades, that sometimes we forget about the fantastic work they do. So I just want to put it on, on the record that, it would be great to get um, um an- another audit and an action plan. But I'd just like it to be known, there is an action plan, as in they really do work their way to make sure that homeless people are housed. I'm not saying there's anything wrong, I'm just saying these guys work very hard and they just don't seem to get the accolade. So I just want to, can you pass on my thanks to the team? Um they'd probably get embarrassed about if, if I, knowing that I said this, but they do work very, very hard and they do their best to make sure that, they work with all the agencies that can possibly be to make sure people are housed, whether it be, uh D V, whether it just be homeless men or whatever. They do their utmost to make sure that they help and then through the hub, they even help even more by feeding them, et cetera. So I just wanted to make it known that um our sources, our team is doing a fantastic job.
Thank you. I have a hand up from councillor D'Souza, then councillor Olive. Councillor D'Souza?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add to that what councillor Saida said. I can tell you an incident. In Metroville, I was walking past a bus stop and I saw a family, that had their bags, had nowhere to go. I asked if they were all right. They said, no, they'd just been evicted. I said, leave it with me. I couldn't get in touch with Teresa Mock that night. But I gave them shelter at my home. And the next day, Teresa and her team organized, with this family, I think to have almost a week of accommodation. I could have been at the Glenson or a motel of some kind. This is the wonderful things this council does. Uh homelessness, Mister Mayor, and loneliness, abutate the spirit of a community. And I'm so glad that you are showing leadership on this issue. I, 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 I heard names mentioned and this should not be a political issue. This is a social issue. And those most vulnerable, those most needy in our community, need to be protected. It is clear in the human, in the United Nations Charter of Human Rights, clean air, clean water, food and shelter are the four most important things for people. That is the essence, the core of protecting our community, offering human rights as we call it. So I'm very glad that you're doing something and I'm very glad our council is doing something. And I, you have my full support on this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor D'Souza. Uh councillor Olive?
Uh yeah, just to uh reply to councillor Sid. Um I, I'm sure that you're correct that a lot of great work's been done, but the first part of that uh, uh amendment was to request the report outlining council's current homeless mitig- mitigation strategies. That's an opportunity for us all to uh, you know, sort of, be become more aware of exactly what council is doing in that particular space. But I do know, you know, sort of, and, and there may be, you know, sort of, plans to actually, um uh to uh uh put in place, you know, further action. And uh I was just, uh um, uh I, I became aware of um uh two thousand and nine and Cumberland Homeless Sector Action Plan, which, you know, sort of, had a forum, um a uh of, of stakeholders and then was able to put together, uh an action plan, you know, sort of involving a whole, whole uh range of um other um organizations, you know, sort of, uh and uh so, you know, sort of, they, they had goals and da, 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 da. And um if that's, you know, sort of, the sort of thing that already exists, well then, um this will, come back and tell us that it already exists, but you know, sort of, as, you know, sort of, uh um uh, a reflection, I suppose, of our concern, you know, sort of homelessness that's occurring, you know, sort of, that um, and the, our, you know, sort of, um wish that, you know, sort of, council would be doing something. Um I've, I've put that um particular motion, motion up to say, you know, sort of, um you know, to ask, you know, what we can do in terms of an action plan or what exists. The basic of that, it wasn't meant as to be a criticism of, you know, sort of, what, what already existed. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh there being no further speakers, I will now um put the merril minute. Uh all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you, councillors. Uh we now move to M M forty slash twenty three, financial assistance and donations, August to September twenty twenty three. Um I take the merril minute as read. Are there any speakers? There being no speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. We now move to M M forty one slash twenty three, interactive Christmas tree. Uh councillors, uh I uh take the merril minute as read. Um are there any speakers? There being no speakers, I'll now put it.
Yes, yes.
So, oh, my apologies, I didn't see there, councillor Pendlefeeny.
That's okay, that's okay. Um.
That's okay, that's okay. Um I just wanted to add an amendment, um just to to be clear that we would get. Um an understanding of the cost of this before it goes ahead and um and that is. In addition to what we already spend, you know, on the Christmas tree, only if it's in addition to what we spend on the current Christmas tree. And that, sorry. That is just because, um as we're all aware, you know, there's a lot of budget constraints at the moment, the, you know. Budget cuts today um weren't uh minimal. And I do think this is a lovely suggestion and an innovative one, which is which is great using technology, but. Coogee does already have a huge spend over Christmas with the carols and it is, I mean, I can just. Promise you it is absolutely packed already um from six A M until, you know, beyond now. So. In terms of the b- local business, we have so much um going on there. And I just, I do feel concerned that if this isn't additional spend. At all and if it is significant, then we could be using it in the other. Town centres or in the Meek Street Plaza like we talked about or on permanent technology like. In other councils, they have U S B ports that allows. Um, you know, people to stop and and use their public spaces more. So. While I think it is a really lovely idea, I just think it would be great that rather than it go through. Within an additional spend that if there's anything above the standard spend, we are made aware.
Um, thank you. Before I call for a second, uh I I might actually uh ask of the general manager his interpretation. Of the recommendation uh as outlined in the business paper, including that source of funding, Mister General Manager.
Thanks, ma'am. Um um you are correct councillor Pendlefeeny, that if there is any additional funding outside of what's already been adopted by the council. The idea is to bring back a report to the council.
Um in light of that advice, councillor Pendlefeeny, do you still wish to move your amendment? Sorry, I can't hear you. You're just on mute, councillor Pendlefeeny.
Sorry, I just wanna clarify that, cause when I did speak to um uh ask questions I wa- with of K D E. I did, um I'm just, yes, just so that I'm clear, I'm a bit kind of foggy at the moment. Um if the tree can't be accommodated within the existing budget, so that's just specifically on the existing budget for the Christmas tree at Coogee.
Thank you. Through to the general manager.
Then we submit, council's budget for the Christmas decorations across the city is one hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. Should this proposal come out uh above that, there'll be a future report that comes at the council meeting in October.
Thank you.
Excellent. And so that would mean not being taken off other areas as well. That's fine then, if that, um yeah, if that's covered, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh I I saw a hand up from councillor Rosenfeld first, then councillor Veach, then councillor Sid.
I I was just gonna say, given that the Mins government today, um I I don't know why, but um I'm and I'm not Christian, but I still was upset that. They cut so much money from the Christmas, beautiful Christmas celebrations in the city. Let let's let's do this to to make up for. Uh the uh the the lack of funds that the state government are putting in, um yeah.
All right, um I s- I I saw, oh, I actually don't recall who I saw first. Um I I saw councillor Veach, then I'm going to councillor Sid, and then was there anyone else? Oh, and then councillor Luxford. Uh Veach, Sid, Luxford.
Uh, thank you. I think just as councillor Pendlefeeny was wrapping up, I think the rest of her question that I would like to know. Is even if uh the tree can be, you know, installed within the budget. Would we also receive a report if funds had to be reallocated from Christmas decorations? In the other centres. I think that's what councillors would, I would certainly like to to be uh. That to be made known.
Thanks, ma'am, yes.
Uh councillor Lux- uh councillor Sid.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I'd just like to, I don't think it needs to be an amendment, but I'd just like to ask the director of committee and culture. If you could just take note that Metropolis is mentioned there and for the last six years. Uh the precinct has always voted on putting lights on a tree in Perry Street. So. Can I just ask you to take note and when you're doing your report, just come and ask me? And Noel will know exactly where it is too. If you can ask us where these people do want this tree, if we can get it, that's fantastic.
Through to the director of community and culture.
Thank you, Miss May. Yes, we can absolutely do that. Just um to clarify. We have considered that location and the issue is power, but we can have a look at it again.
Ca- councillor Luxford.
Um, look, I'm happy with the tree. I think, you know, it's something innovative and perhaps different. I'm willing to give up the yucky fairy lights and the tree wrapping from Kokoda Park to go towards this tree. Because our end of the woods gets nothing. And we now have Meek Street Plaza, which wasn't completed. You know, in the first go and is nothing like what we were promised to get. So perhaps this tree could actually go in the Meek Street Plaza.
Is that a proposed amendment? No, that was not a, that's a comment, that was a comment. Um uh are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Uh M M forty two slash twenty three, recognizing. Uh Randwick Galloping Greens for their historic shoot shield twenty twenty three premiership win. Thank you, um. I, councillors, I take the merrill minute as read. Uh there is a proposed amendment from councillor Hamilton. Could you please outline what it is that you're seeking to move?
Yes, I've sent it through to Mister Kelly. Um given, given that your merrill minute doesn't specify an event. I think that holding a congratulatory, I can't even say the word, congratulatory lunch. And including all the players, directors and ourselves as councillors, because unfortunately. We were in a workshop and so we were tied up in very important strategic um. Uh matters i- to the benefit of Randwick residents. But I know that a lot of us would have been there to see this and it would have been fantastic to see it. So. Um if you'll accept my amendment, I think that that would be a nice thing for us to do.
I do. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Rosenfeld.
Yeah, I fully support the amendment. It's uh it's very significant, first premiership in nineteen years, a club that uh is is. Basically one of the best records in Sydney grade rugby. Uh was in the seventies and eighties, uh virtually every year they were either winning or or in the grand final. Uh to to see him uh in the on the winner's circle again is fantastic and and I I think uh. Holding a congratulatory lunch would be more than adequate.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers on the merrill minute, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you. Um M M forty three slash twenty three, continuation of the Sister City Scholarship with Tomoroshire Council. Uh councillors, I take the merrill minute as being read and commend it to the floor. Are there any speakers? There being, ca- councillor Sid.
Just very quickly, Mister Mayor, I'd just like to thank you for doing this because I can tell you that the actual. Tomoroshai council do appreciate this greatly. Um fifteen hundred dollars might not seem a lot to people who grew up in the city, but these kids really do. Love it and it doesn't mean they just have to go to university, go to the T A F, they can do anything, they do their studies and they really do appreciate it and uh. I'm sure we'll all get, as a council, a very good congratulatory uh letter and uh. On behalf of Tomor and on behalf of, I really do, I was speaking to the mayor and he's very, very. Uh congratulatory, I'd really like to thank you and the council for all this money. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Sid. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you. We now have M M forty four slash twenty three. Request for permission for the family event at Arthur Byrne Reserve. Uh do I have any speakers? Okay, thank you.
Uh look, I I would just like to make a a comment that. I'm I'm a little bit uncomfortable about the precedents that we may be setting here. This is um very. Uh highly esteemed, uh contributed to the community, uh I think it's it's wonderful for the Byrne family. However, this is. The son of an alderman, former alderman, and what we're saying is we're going to assist them to have a party in a park. And so where could this lead? Could this lead to us potentially putting up other family members of previous. Aldermen or or councillors um and having, you know, waiving fees for them to have parties in the park. So I'm just looking at. How this may seem to outsiders, people who are not quite privy to the contribution this family may have made. To their political party or to the people of Randwick, given the timeframe. And so I'm just concerned that we might be setting a precedent, that's all. And I just don't, I'm not gonna vote for this.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further speakers?
I'd just like to say, I think it's unfortunate that.
Councillor Nielsen.
Councillor Hamilton um is saying that, I mean, I take the point that you're raising, um councillor Hamilton, but I do know that we have done. Waive fees for other events similar to this, not necessarily um. Sons, daughters of um councillors or former aldermen or whatever, but we have waived. Fees for people to have events and I think that this is really the fact that it's an event, it's celebratory and so on, so. Yeah, but she didn't ask for one. If she had, we would have.
Ca- ca- coun- councillors, coun- councillors, could, um all all comments are directed through the chair. Um and um tha- 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 coun- councillors, thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Veach.
Uh, look, uh thank you. Look, I actually share councillor Hamilton's con- concerns. Um. I don't think there's anything untoward, anyone is able to to make the request. Uh but again, given that it's not the former councillor themselves, but sort of uh. A salon, they were they were a councillor an extremely long time ago. Um. We do get requests, obviously for waiving of fees for use of parks and so on, but it's generally. For like a community group or 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 a church, a congregation, you know, uh is often the case, so. Um, I'm I'm, for such a big uh event, I'm just not sure why they didn't offer to sort of. Carry the costs themselves or just request for a smaller amount for just for just a part of it or something. So, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh councillor Olive.
Uh, yeah, I I was thinking something similar as I was reading, uh reading this, that, you know, sort of, it's the son of um someone who was very esteemed. But I I, uh the reason why I didn't object to it was because, you know, sort of it involved fee waivers rather than. You know, financial contribution, but there is also, you know, sort of the the waste management part of it is in in kind, which is costing council money. I mean, I can, uh and so, you know, sort of, I I won't be opposing this, but I think that, you know, sort of. Um we have to look at, you know, sort of the way that we um give donations as to, you know, sort of. Um what does it's a plant, you know, sort of, and in the case of uh fee waves, no one else may be using the. The park that does actually cost council something, but the the um in kind might, but so uh. Uh I, because it's not a uh financial grant, I won't be opposing it, but. I I do feel it's a bit uncomfortable when you have, you know, the children of, you know, someone who is esteemed and, yeah.
Are there any further speakers? Are there being no further speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? I declare that carried. If there's a call from division. So, so, uh sorry, I, so hold on. There has been a request for, ho- hold on, thank you. There's been a request for a division. A request for a division requires, under the code of meeting practice, it requires two councillors. I have one from councillor Rosenfeld. Okay, there is also a request for a division from councillor McCafferty. Um will thou go to a division? Um all those in favour of the merrill minute, please raise your hand. We have councillor Nielsen, councillor Luxford, councillor Chapel, councillor Olive. Councillor Wilson, councillor Sid, uh and myself. All those against, we have councillor uh Ha- Hamilton, councillor Veach. So, so, uh coun- councillor Pendlefeeny, are you against or for? Sorry. Sorry, I can't hear you.
Sorry, um, yeah, I, yeah, I'm happy for you to leave it like that.
Ca- councillor Pendlefeeny is taken as voting against, uh councillor Veach, councillor Hay. Councillor Rosenfeld, councillor um councillor McCafferty, councillor Burst and councillor D'Souza. Thank you. I declare the merrill minute lost. Thank you, um. I know, I have to inform the the individuals. Um, okay, we now move to supplementary. Thank you. Now move to the supplementary business paper. Thank you. In relation to M M forty five slash twenty three. Uh look, councillors, this uh represents a motion of condolence on behalf. Um of Randwick Council uh for the tragic passing of uh former mayor and alderman John Scullion. Uh as was previously mentioned, he passed away on the second of September. Um uh on hearing of his passing, uh I um actually uh sought out um uh. The uh recollections of uh members of the public in Randwick um. Council um id- identities in the past who've played some role in this institution and. Um the the response uh as to the contribution uh for a former mayor and alderman um Scullion. Uh was that he was a uh a a very dedicated and passionate community servant. Uh on Randwick Council, he um was a uh very firm uh in in direct chair. Uh and um made sure to impart his wisdom uh to other councillors and those um who were. Um interested uh in 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 that. Uh he served on. Uh Randwick Council through what was quite a tumultuous period in Randwick's uh history. Uh and was uh one of the first newly elected councillors after a period of uh administration. He was instrumental in. Uh giving voice to uh resident frustrations over the the delays in in the delivery of the Maruba Pavilion project. Uh and was also on hand uh eh there at the opening of the building and the completion um. Uh when uh tenders were called. Uh Miss Scullion was also instrumental in handing over the keys to the restored historic. Uh Sandgate uh cottage uh on Bellmore Road uh to the Randwick Historical Society. Uh and the building was bu- built on land granted by Simeon Pearce, the first mayor of Randwick. Uh on behalf of the entire Randwick Council family, I would like to uh pass on our sincere condolences. Uh to uh former mayor and alderman uh Scullion's uh family, uh to commend uh him uh for his service. Uh and to express our condolence to the family. I commend the merrill minute. Thank you. Are there any speakers? There being no speakers, I will now put it. All those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you. Uh M M forty six slash twenty three, uh support for changing tides event at the Randwick Ritz. Uh councillors, I take the merrill minute uh as read. Uh it's in the supplementary business paper. Um thank you, M M forty six slash twenty three. Um this is a community request in order to hold a screening uh available to the uh public. Uh I'm advised uh that uh Randwick Council will be making a contribution uh if this is to be successful and the Ritz is providing a concessional uh rate. Uh in relation to the community group. This has come uh to me uh in independently as a request. Uh from uh the community. Uh thank you. I commend the merrill minute. Uh are there any further speakers? Uh councillor Hay.
Um, I I'd like to ask a question o- of the mayor. On the twenty seventh of June council meeting, we already uh. Uh approved a budget of twenty eight thousand nine hundred dollars for the yes campaign. Uh why would we spend an extra one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars of of beyond the budget?
Uh, thank you councillor Hay. Uh the uh intention behind this merrill minute is in addition to that sum. Uh it comes on the advice that other um items had already been earmarked as it relates to that allocation. Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Uh councillor Burst.
I would just like to. Urge caution. With the present um, the present polls at the moment, over fifty percent of our community.
Uh cau- coun- councillor, um ni- councillor Nielsen, councillor Nielsen, all speakers will be heard in silence. Uh not to interject across the table, councillor Burst, please continue.
Potentially fifty percent of the Randwick community may not be voting yes, they may vote no. And that's a democratic choice that everybody has. Um we need to be careful we don't alienate fifty percent of our community. Um so we need to be careful where we put money and knowing that we're spending additional funds that could go to homelessness. Could go to people that are um struggling with paying their bills. That could go to homelessness, could go to people that are, um, struggling with paying their bills each week. Um, putting food on the table. Uh, we need to be careful how we spend our money. We need to be responsible for that. So I urge a lot of caution.
Thank you councillor Burst. Are there any fir- oh councillor Chapel.
Thank you, Mr. Med. Um, just to speak briefly in favour of the motion, um, I think this sounds like a fantastic event. I think it's very rare. Certainly in my experience that the surfing community comes to us with requests like this. Um, and I think, um, it sounds like a really inspiring thing for us to be part of. I think this is what we should be looking at, events like this that are engaging for younger communities, for segments of the community we don't usually talk to and service. In this kind of interesting and creative way. Um, and I just want to support the motion.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Alrighty, um, we now move to, um, uh, urgent business. Is there any urgent business?
I have two items for urgent business. Uh, send both of them through to Mr. Kelly. The first one, Mr. Kelly, oh. Yeah, you too. Okay, great. Yes, thank you. Um, the first one that I have is that I'd like to um activate a Randwick resident respect campaign. And what I mean by that is I'd like for us to form a committee to bring together key community experts on support mechanisms for domestic violence. So these experts are s- uh experts on support mechanisms, just to be clear, from within the Randwick L G A. And ensure councillors receive a briefing, actually, don't I've done, I've jumped straight to the motion, I apologise. The urgency is, um, the fact that I would like us to have a briefing in October. So that we could have some kind of information around what we could do to, um, to help. Uh, domestic violence sufferers by the twenty fourth of October. So that's the urgency of my motion. Sorry, I went straight into the motion.
That's fine. Thank you very much, uh councillor Hamilton. Um, it being a procedural motion, um. Uh, I, I don't need a second for it, do I? No, it being a procedural motion in relation to urgent business. Um, it will require a um vote of councillors and the concurrence of the chair. Um, as point B calls for councillors requesting and receiving a briefing. Prior to the October council meeting, uh, and there being no other facility in order for us to do that other than an extraordinary business. Uh, as chair, I consider that it would meet the threshold of urgency in that regard. Um, now, in order to get the concurrence of the meeting, I will call, um, for a vote of councillors. As to whether or not they consider it as urgent business. Uh, all those in favour of considering the motion, uh, moved councillor Hamilton. All those against? Okay, declare the ur- uh, uh, declare it carried, the procedural motion to consider this as urgent business. Uh, councillor Hamilton, would you please move your motion and I might just call for a second. You're all very quick. I actually saw councillor Burst first.
Thank you. Um, yes, I think that, as I mentioned, um, earlier in the first merril minute. That domestic violence is the number one cause of homelessness. And I know there are a lot of organisations that are doing a lot of work, a lot of fantastic work. Um, and, but what I'm proposing here is that we form a committee and work with the experts within our Randwick L G A. And ask them to brief us on the current situation as pertains to Randwick residents. And then work on initiative promoting re- um, respect for Randwick residents and find out. What else can we do? Because. We are in a grip of a domestic violence crisis and I have two daughters. And I want my daughters to be able to fall in love, but I want them to be able to fall out of love. And that person that they did love, I want them to respect their decision. That's what's missing at the moment. There are a lot of families suffering because there are a lot of people that don't respect the decision. That they don't want to be in a relationship any longer with another person. And I'm so saddened to see in the news, oh, far too often. Incidences where family members are taken away way too early. And I really believe that we could do more, um, and so that's why I've put it up and I'm really sorry.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Burst is the seconder. Do you wish to speak?
Firstly, I'd like to commend councillor Hamilton's motion. Uh, domestic violence is a scourge on our society and it needs to be stamped out and we need to work hard to stamp it out. Um, and if we need to take no prisoners, we need to stop it. It's one of those disgusting things that should never happen in our society. And anything we can do to stop it is a positive thing for our community.
Thank you, um councillor Chapel.
Yeah, sorry, just a few questions on it, um, obviously.
Could, could I just ask councillor Chapel where you're directing the questions to?
Uh, through you to the mover of the motion, if that's okay, but otherwise.
No, that, that's fine, just so I can get an idea.
Um, just, um, we're talking about support mechanisms. I was wondering whether, um, that was conceived of as also including preventative mechanisms. Or just kind of, um, post-violence and family disruption support, um, per se.
I'm through to the mover of the motion.
It's all, all of it.
Thank you, councillor Chapel.
Sorry, and then my other question was, respect is in capitals, um, and clearly, um, indicates something of deeper significance. But I'm not aware of what the, the full breadth of that programme is. Is that, uh, an existing? Okay.
Um, councillor Hamilton.
No, no, it's not. I, I guess I was just trying to emphasise it a bit more that that's the point that I'm making is. That I just hope that, what I really believe is that people should just respect a decision, that they don't want to be in a relationship. That's, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, uh councillor Hamilton, do you wish to close the debate? No? Okay, thank you. I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Uh, councillor Hamilton, your second item of urgent business.
Just, can I have two seconds?
Uh, yes, y- y- you, you might. What I might actually do, if that's all right, is, um. We will continue down the business paper and what I will do at a later point is call for a procedural motion to reconsider urgent business at a later time. I think that's probably the most appropriate way in order to do that. Yes, um, ca- the previous uh motion was considered as unanimous. Um, so for those who are listening online, um, there is a second item of urgent business, but what we will do is, uh, I will call at a later, uh, point. Um, just for a procedural motion to consider urgent business, uh, at a later point during, uh, the rest of the meeting. Um, what we will do is we will, uh, ca- what time is it? Eight, two, we, we will. We'll continue down the items on the business paper, just call for, um, uh, challenged items, uh. Yeah, we'll do that, just to continue through. Um, uh, okay. There being no general managers' reports, um, do I have a s- challenge, uh, C P thirty one slash twenty three in seriatum? Unchallenged, thank you. Yes.
Um, if councillor Ham- Hamilton returns and did want to challenge something and she wasn't here, can you just accept it?
Yeah, that, I, I, I will, I will, I will do that. We can recommit. Um, C P thirty two slash twenty three, purchase of the property challenged by councillor Rosenfeld. C P thirty three slash twenty three, Randwick Junction planning, uh, being a planning matter needs to be challenged. Okay, uh, thank you, um. C P thirty four slash, uh, challenged by councillor Luxford. C P thirty five slash twenty three, variation to development standards under clo- clause four point six. Uh, one, two, uh, sorry, four point six, the first to the thirty first of August twenty twenty three. Unchallenged. C S thirty six slash twenty three, feasibility of introducing fogo bins in councils' parks. And public spaces. Unchallenged.
Challenge.
Uh, C S thirty seven slash twenty three, I take it is challenged by councillor Haye. Yeah, C S thirty eight slash twenty eight is challenged by councillor Chapel. Okay, C C twenty one slash twenty three is challenged by councillor McCafferty. C C twenty two slash twenty three is challenged by councillor McCafferty. There's the review of the public comment to media policy, is that correct? Okay, thank you. Okay, C O forty four slash twenty three, long-term financial plan twenty three to thirty three, challenged by councillor Chapel. C O forty five slash twenty three, monthly financial report as at the thirty first of August twenty twenty three. Unchallenged. C O forty six slash twenty three, investment report, August twenty twenty three. Unchallenged. Um, I will just take a pause. Uh, councillor Hamilton, we're moving down in seriatum. Um, if there are any items, um, which you do wish to challenge, um, during that debate. There is the abil- no, no, uh, councillor Hamilton, if there are any items, um, ca- we have the ability to recommit. So we can redel with them if there are any which seek to be challenged. That's fine. Um, C O forty seven slash twenty three, Public Interest Disclosures Act, unchallenged. C O forty eight slash twenty three, fraud and corruption, uh, challenged by councillor Olive. Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, before I call for, um, a move of the unchallenged items, what I'm just gonna do is I'm actually just gonna read through the unchallenged items. Uh, which, as I have them, uh, C P thirty one slash twenty three, creative hoardings, um. C P thirty five slash twenty three, variation to development standards, C P thirty six slash twenty three, feasibility to introduce fogo bins. Uh, C P, C O, monthly financial, uh, C O forty five slash twenty three, monthly financial report as at thirty one August. C O forty six, which is the investment report, August twenty three, C O forty seven slash twenty three is the Public Disclosures. Uh, Act twenty twenty three. Do I have someone to move the unchallenged items? Move councillor Rosenfeld, seconded, councillor Wilson. Uh, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. We now move to the first challenged item, which is C P thirty two slash twenty three. Purchase of the property at three, uh, to seven Lexington Place, Maruba.
Um, yeah, just as per the business paper, fully support this. Um, it's really, uh, good that we, uh, keep it as much, uh. Uh, the, the property that is for affordable housing as, as possible. And the, the great work of the hub does in South Maruba, that, that needs to continue. So, um, I fully commend, uh, this, this item, uh, as per the business paper.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Chapel, are you seeking to second it? Um, as the seconder? Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Um, councillor Nielsen.
Do we need to note in point two that, um, it's, uh, nine residential units or?
Well, councillor, councillor Rosenfeld, you move it in an amended fashion to, to correct that typographical area. Thank you. Um, there being no further, uh, councillor Veach.
Uh, thank you. I also, uh, fully support this, this motion. It's, yeah, it's gonna be absolutely great. Uh, I'm just, uh, through to the relevant officer. Will council receive some kind of report as to what we intend to sort of do with the property? Any changes or, you know, further development of what's going on there at the moment? Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, councillors, uh, once council gets its possession, we will do that. Uh, certainly the intention from the council's intention was to have it all for affordable housing.
Thank you, um, with the indulgence of the meeting, I will make comments from the chair. I try and avoid doing it. Um, what I would like to do is actually just congratulate, um, council staff, uh, on the proactive manner in which they have pursued. Um, and secured this, um, property for, uh, Randwick City Council. Um, I was very impressed by, um, the openness and proactiveness. And actually making sure, um, that we were able to secure this property, which is very important, uh, to the community. Uh, the second thing which I'd like to do is commend, uh, my council colleagues who, uh, were involved in, um, the more detailed, um, uh. I- i- information in relation to the purchase of this property and, and the open-minded and collaborative, uh, manner in which we all worked. So I'd like to congratulate, um, you all on that and, and to thank you for your contributions in that regard. Um, with that, uh, are there any further speakers?
Mister Med, you want that noted in the minutes?
Uh, I, 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 i- i- would, would you like that noted?
Seem appropriate, wouldn't it? Otherwise, it's only those of us who are here now hear this, it's all a brief note.
Um, what I might suggest is ca- just for procedural, councillor Rosenfeld, you incorporate a congratulations to staff. As well as the panel in, in the way in which they've approached this task.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you ver- thank you very much. Um, there being no further speakers, I'll now put it. Um, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that ca- oh, declare that carried, my apologies. Um, C P thirty three slash twenty three, Randwick Junction planning proposal, I believe that was challenged by councillor Burst. Councillor Burst, could you please outline what it is that you're moving?
I'd like to, uh, propose an amendment.
Okay, could you please outline what that is?
On the bottom of page thirty seven. Um, where it states, number sixty High Street, contributory building status, remove contributory building status. And move the first sentence. So that sentence starts with, the owners are requesting the site be included in the boundary for rezoning.
Councillor Burst, for my benefit, could you just repeat that?
On the bottom of page thirty seven.
Yes.
There's a dot point, number sixty High Street, dash, contributory building status.
Yes.
Remove contributy- contributory building status and remove the first sentence in that paragraph. The R, R L P P has forwarded a submission, um, on the property of sixty High Street and, um. And, and so, and. And that the site be included in the boundary for rezoning from residential and business.
Okay.
Basically the first sentence.
All right, so you are moving the, you are moving the report in an amended fashion.
Correct.
With a, uh, can, uh, can I just get you to turn to page thirty two for me? No, can, can I get you to turn to page thirty two for me? Yep. Think.
Thirty two, yes.
Yep, okay. Uh, you're moving it with a point A, is that correct? No, 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 point A, B, C, D, and there is a new point E.
E.
Yep, which has on the bottom of two thirty s- uh, seven, uh, remove contributory building, um, is that correct?
Yes, and the, and the first sentence.
Yep, thank you. Is, okay, seconded by councillor D'Souza. Councillor Burst, do you wish to speak to your motion? Thank you. So, thanks, uh, I thank you for that. I was confused just in what it, what's he removing.
Thank you for clar- uh, thank you for, I'm glad I could clarify. Um, I'd just, uh, like to thank Kay Javi for coming up and speaking, her passionate, um, talk on. To see that a, a property's been sort of, um, had to be chopped in half, literally, to put a, a driveway in, in the property. Um, certainly changes the, the whole architecture and changes the design of the building. Also now you're gonna have a seven-storey building and you're gonna be looking up that wall. Hopefully it's more than just a, a concrete wall and it has a bit of something, uh, better colour to it. Um, so it's, it's gonna be pretty tough living in those conditions and you're gonna have high rises around you. Um, the place is, is, is in repai- in disrepair, it's falling apart, there's cracks everywhere. Um, I think it's, um, I think we need to do the right thing by, by the tenants and by the owners of the property and let them move on. And let them live their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, uh councillor D'Souza.
Mister Mayor, uh, the Greek philosopher Aristotle. Basically talked, when it came to analysing an argument, used three words, logos, for logic and evidence-based. The word pathos, for emotional reasons why things should occur, shouldn't occur. And finally ethos, ethical reasons why things like this or in an argument should be analysed. It became obvious listening to Kay Javi that logically, and of course wonderful councillor Burst. That logically, it doesn't make sense that this site should be left as it is. With two towering buildings either side. What happens in that, when I, when we used to, part of the planning process, we talked about overshadowing. We talked about light, we talked about all these things which are so important to improve the quality of life. Now, if this is allowed to proceed the way it is, all these important aspects will be compromised. Emotionally ethos, he talks about. Well, Kay's spoken, it becomes obvious from the patients and other people that this site is important. But we can do better. So I'll leave it at that. And the last one, I guess, is. Uh, the word pathos, and it's about passion. And Kay was certainly passionate about. And Kay was certainly passionate about the way she presented a case. So in my case, Aristotle's way of analysing things was three boxes. Well, distinct all three boxes. And I fully support what councillor Burst is proposing. He's not talking about dismantling a plan. But he's talking about protecting the rights of a resident. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. I have a hand up from councillor Veach, then councillor Olive.
Sorry, can I just be reminded who moved? Did you, did council?
It's moved, it's so, the motion, the motion moved, so we're not debating an amendment, we're we're de- we're debating the motion.
This is not actually an amendment. It did, sorry, did council of burst move this in an amended fashion?
Miss Miss Mister Kelly, it shouldn't say amendment, it should actually be a point E. Um what that means is that. If the motion in front of us is successful, it it is adopted with points A through to E. Okay, thank you. Um councillor Olive, then I'll go to ca- so I saw councillor Olive. Then I actually saw councillor Nielsen, then I saw councillor Hay.
Uh I'd like to foreshadow a motion. I would, I'd I make it an amendment, but it'd be a complete negation of the motion. But so I'll foreshadow a motion. Um can I do that now?
Uh you can foreshadow what it is that you'll move. I'll then move back after you you're foreshadowing what it is that you will move. To the to the debate which is um on foot. So if you'd like to read out what you're foreshadowing and then we'll continue on.
Okay, um I'm foreshadowing um the council postpone a decision on the Randwick Junction planning proposal. Um until it can be certain that new housing under the plan will be diversified. And included in council's housing target. Um I gave that to Mister Kelly.
Thank you. So just to confirm that what you're foreshadowing is A, B, C and D with a new point E.
So now I I to delete um all that went before it, which would be A, B, C, D, E.
Yep.
Just a new point A.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Olive has foreshadowed that as a motion. Thank you. In the event that what is moved by Burst D'Souza fails. Okay, thank you. We now move back to the substantive. Yes, yes. Uh so so you can add the, you you can add the point when we get to it. Cause it's it's a, it's a direct negative. Uh yeah, um councillor Ni- Nielsen, councillor Nielsen?
I would propose moving the recommendation as per the business paper. Um I am sympathetic towards the points that and issues that have been raised. By the owners of sixty High Street, but I think we are correct. In uh following the process that we had proposed previously. And that is that its status being contributory be reviewed following the community consultation. Um I think that still makes sense and still allows that to to happen. Uh for that um appropriate consideration to be made, an appropriate decision. Um I'm not of a mind to um support the amendment that's being proposed. By councillor Olive, I can see it's well intended. But uh I just remind him that it's taken quite some time for us to get to this stage to put this. Um forward and we have to have gone through various other stages of approval from various other higher authorities and so on. So I don't think we can um stop at this stage to then. Uh take into consideration all these other points that you are raising. And the other thing is that I think that when you consider. That that's not to say that these points couldn't be put in as submissions. So I think that that might be an appropriate time for the issues that you're talking about to be put in. They could be put in during the submission stage and then that could be part of our consideration going forward. Um so I just um asked councillors to support the recommendation as per the business paper. Um for us to go forward and for it to go out on consultation for the community to um put in their submissions. And then when we've got their submissions and in fullness of time. Um and looking at it from the totality of the submissions. Cause that's the other important thing. It's quite a large area, but it's a complicated area. Um I think we're going to come up with um better decisions. I just urge you to support the um. Uh original business paper and that's what, uh written recommendation as per the business paper, that's what I'm putting forward.
Thank you. So. In front of us, we have the motion moved. Could you just move up slightly, Mister Kelly? Mister Kelly, could you just bring the screen up for us? Thank you. Currently, I'm just clarifying for everybody, cause I can see where we're going. Currently in front of us, which is being debated is the motion has moved to burst D'Souza. Councillor Olive has foreshadowed a different motion in the event that this fails. Okay, which would mean that if we were, this were to fail, we would then move to councillor Olive's moved motion. In the event that councillor Olive's motion were to fail. Councillor Nielsen has foreshadowed that she will move the recommendation on the business paper. Returning to the debate on burst D'Souza, councillor Hay. Thank you. Councillor Veach, you had a question?
Um yeah, I I do, I do have a a question through through to the relevant officer. Just to clarify, because I don't read um. Councillor Olive's foreshadowed motion as a direct negative. It is simply a deferral pending further clarification around the housing. Which is actually a really critical issue in our area. So uh my interpretation of his. Of his is that it of his foreshadowed amendment is that it's actually an actual amendment. Because I don't, it's not saying don't do it, it's just saying defer it pending advice from the minister.
So so ca- councillor Veach. Councillor Olive has stated that he's foreshadowing, uh I'm just, just hold on, foreshadowing a motion. If he were to move an amendment seeking a deferral. That is something which is available to him in order to do that. He also has the ability to foreshadow a future motion. There there are two options which are available to him. Yep. Okay, just to really confuse it, councillor Olive is now moving an amendment. Okay, moved councillor Olive. Seconded councillor Veach. We now move to the debate on the amendment. Just to confirm for everyone, that is to delete all other words that and to include the words that council postponed a decision of the Randwick Junction planning proposal. Until it can be certain that new housing under the plan will be diversified and included in council's housing targets. Okay, are there any further speakers? Councillor Olive, do you wish to speak to your amendment?
Um yeah, this uh planning proposal would um uh proposes sort of changes to the built form controls. That would um allow for an additional four hundred dwellings. Um what form will those dwellings take? Well, in um uh residential areas where you're sort of residential flats or shop top. Uh housing are allowed, then um the housing set says that you can actually um have. Um uh co-living, you can um um develop co-living there. Uh without, you know, sort of um um. Uh and that will be compliant. So this is the sort of thing that's happened in Kensington, in in K to K. Where we have a situation where um uh of the of the dwellings so far. You have four hundred and twenty eight private dwellings and three thousand and nine co-living living. Student housing housing dwellings. So, you know, sort of the logical um or the the possibility, the the likelihood even. Uh in uh the situation that we have uh in Randwick. Uh with four hundred, with the rezoning and four hundred, it um allow for four hundred additional dwellings. That most of those will be student co-living. And I mean, if you, if I take you to page fifty six here, that um. It says here amongst, you know, sort of the uh uh the um. Uh local strategic planning uh statement and the comments related to that and how this. Uh planning proposal actually fits in, it says it provides diverse housing. Um uh close, uh it is is one of the, one of the aspects here. Now, um this housing may not be, you know, sort of uh diverse at all, it may all be uniform. And that's, you know, sort of one of the uh, one of the problems with this, that uh we may have, you know, sort of a um. A demographic, uh may enforce some sort of dem- demographic uniformity and not any demographic diversity. And that's one concern. The other concern is that with all that, the um the student housing in uh in Randwick. It may not add to um uh the dwelling targets that Randwick has. And so, you know, sort of while we're saying that this is four hundred dwellings that will add to our dwelling targets, that may not be the case at all. So what I'm asking for here is that we just postpone um the pr- the planning proposal. Uh I mean, last meeting, we had, uh we asked for a moratorium on this kind of development. Um we, the mayor has asked for clarity around uh co-living. Uh to with this, uh to the state government as to, you know, whether that can actually contribute to our targets. While we have all this uncertainty and while we have this possibility that, you know, sort of we will just have the, some kind of. Uniformity on the dwellings that are um are developed in Randwick. I think that we should postpone our decisions and hasten slowly. So that's why I've put forward that amendment.
Thank you. Councillor Veach is the seconder?
Um I fully support this amendment. Councillors, I would really um urge you to consider, uh with the greatest respect. Consider supporting this amendment. Um we've had major uh commercial student uh accommodation developers essentially. Snap up properties at key transport nodes right across the inner city. Not only have they snapped up all of the major nodes along Anzac Parade, along the Light Rail. And right next to the light rail stations. They've also done so uh near Sydney University, um near Redfern Station. They have, when Regent Street was rezoned by City of Sydney. Um many of those older buildings are now uh student accommodation blocks being charged a top dollar. Not only that. Uh in one of those blocks, the uh sort of commercial, sort of the retail space on the ground floor. Has been left vacant for four years. I actually happened to meet someone who had been negotiating with them to to rent out one of those spaces. And then they dropped it. So the spa- the 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 streetscape area is not being developed. They've also snapped up also Everleigh Street near Redfern Station and then also um other student accommodation blocks. Near Central Station on Broadway. Like, we we cannot look away from the fact. That this key node next to the Randwick Light Rail. If you look at this as a pattern, there is a pattern, could easily just be turned into more um. Really, really expensive student accommodation and and like, these developers are taking advantage of parents who are sending their children. Across the other side of the world to to study, to to learn English, to get a degree. You know, they're eighteen years old and they want them to be somewhere safe and secure. And so they are forking out thousands and thousands of dollars. These these tiny studios are a minimum of six hundred and fifty dollars a week. Um and where students are having to to pay, that there is a cap on the amount of hours that they can work. Um if they are international students. So I think we have to be so careful about this. We are in the, we have been writing to the to the minister. Uh we need to call this out because otherwise, this is, this, these are the centres where we should be having diverse housing. To cater for key workers uh and all members of our community, including students who can also rent out apartments. It doesn't have to be student accommodation. So I think this is a really good amendment and I hope council will support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh before I move to, actually, I'll go to councillor Hay, then I have a question. Councillor Hay.
Uh councillors, uh this is very different from the student housing issue and how we're building these twenty story, oh sorry. N- near twenty story uh developments in Kensington Kingsford. This is a tasteful development. Eight stories above the old uh Randwick Plaza, Royal Randwick Shopping Centre sites. The residents are crying out for an a new, better shopping centre. The Lane Way Dining, this is a uh brilliant plan. I I wish that we uh were. Um anyway, this is a brilliant plan. I wish that uh we could uh make a move on this as soon as possible. Last council meeting, we deferred this. We deferred it last meeting. We were briefed. We have, yes, three briefings now, I believe. What are we going to do? Are we going to kick this can even further down the road or are we going to start delivering for the residents? Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question through to the direct, the acting director of city planning. Um could you please outline your interpretation of the amendment? And what implications it would have on the progression of the Randwick Junction planning proposal?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The um the delay would actually um mean that the planning proposal. Um wouldn't be able to be submitted to the Department of Planning. So the background to the planning proposal is it's trying to encourage. A change in the 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 vision, the um heritage significance, protect heritage values. Um and look at commercial um opportunities as well as residential in the plant, in the in the whole centre. Um the delay would mean that um our timeframe for submitting that planning proposal to um the state government would be. Um probably not within this this year. Um the other um point that I'd like to raise also is that. Uh co-living um is a permissible use um in the zone. And it's um it's via the state, the the state policy. And a local plan can't override um a state policy. So we can put the position to the other government. Um but it's up to the minister to allow a change. So it's a permissible use in the zone.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further speakers on the amendment? Okay, there being no further speakers on, uh councillor Hamilton? On the amendment.
I'll have a question.
Yep, that's fine.
Yeah, so just, it it's in regards to a couple of heritage items. So back in April twenty one, I moved in Severinos seconded, that we defer. So we did defer back in April twenty one. Um but we did all, we did add uh heritage items. And I note that those heritage items, so we've got one Belmore Road, it's on page um thirty four. The council resolution from April twenty one. And it was one Belmore Road, one sixty seven, one seventy one Allison Road and one seventy nine to one eighty one Allison Road. And but what I can see in all the remaining reports that have been brought back. One six seven to one seventy one Allison Road and one seven nine to one eighty one Allison Road are no longer on the list. And I just wanted to know um how that happened or how that came about.
Through to the acting director of city planning.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um I just, could you just repeat the question? Is it, how did, how did it happen that they?
Thank, thank you. Just before you do that, just for those who are listening online. Um councillor uh Hamilton just reiterated a question as it relates to um se- several um. Heritage items which were um under consideration at some point, which are no longer currently recommended. Uh through to the acting director of uh city planning.
Thank you, Mr May. Those items were included in the comprehensive planning proposal. So they were, they have already been um added to the to the schedule. Yeah, so they don't need to be included in this one, cause it's already been done, rolled into the comprehensive.
Okay, thank you. Uh are there any further speakers on the amendment? There being no further speakers on the amendment, I'll now put the amendment. Uh it being a planning matter, we will go straight to a division. Uh so it is the amendment Olive Veach. And it is, the amendment Olive Veach uh is amending the motion moved. First to Sosa. Um all those in favour of uh the amendment? Please raise your hand. Uh councillor Pendlefeeny, councillor Veach. Councillor Chapel, councillor Olive, all those against. Uh we have councillor Hamilton, Nielsen, Hay, Luxford, Rosenfeld, McCafferty, Wilson. Said Burst D'Souza and myself. Uh I declare that amendment lost. Uh we now move back to the debate on the motion moved. Uh by Burst D'Souza, which has A through D as per the recommendation on the business paper. With a new point, point E to remove sixty High Street from the contributory building status and the site to be included in the boundary for rezoning. Um I have a hand up on the debate.
Uh there's a foreshadowed amendment.
Is it an amendment or a foreshadowed motion?
Foreshadowed motion.
Okay, thank you. So we then go back to the debate on the motion moved burst to Sosa. Councillor Wilson, you have your hand up.
I admitted earlier to de- um to declare a non-significant, non-procurnary interest. Uh regarding this particular matter. Um I have in the past been a member of the Randwick Labour Club. I am acquainted with some of the directors, although I wouldn't know that they were directors, cause I don't know much about the club. Um, I will be voting on this matter.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, councillor Wilson. Are there any further speakers on the motion moved Burst de Souza? Okay, councillor Burst, do you wish to close the debate? Okay, thank you. All right. Um, before I put it to a division, a reminder that in the event that this fails, there is a foreshadowed motion from councillor Nielsen to remove it as per the business paper. I'll now go straight to a division, it being a planning matter. Um, all those in favour of the motion moved Burst de Souza, please raise your hand. Okay, we have councillor Hay, councillor Rosenfeld, councillor Sedd, councillor Burst, councillor de Souza. All those against? We have councillor Hamilton, Pendlefeeny, Nielsen, Veach, Luxford, Chapel, Olive, McCafferty, Wilson and the mayor. I declare, uh, the motion lost. Councillor Nielsen, could you please move your foreshadowed? Well, you, could you please move the motion and seconded by councillor Hamilton?
It's, uh, as per the business paper.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Hamilton is the seconder. Do you wish to speak to it? No? Okay, thank you. Uh, th- there's a hand up from councillor Hay.
Um, uh, I'd ask, I'd ask a question, uh, through the meds of the relevant officer. Uh, when this came up to the council meeting last month, uh, I moved an amendment, uh, successfully, or, uh, maybe it was amended fashion, that any submission regarding sixty High Street, uh, would be thoroughly reviewed or was to similar effect. Uh, does that, uh, amendment still apply?
Uh, thank you. Through to the, uh, acting director of city planning.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, that's, that's gone through. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I will now, uh, there being no further speakers, councillor Nielsen, do you wish to close the debate? No? Okay, I'll now put it. It being a planning matter, we will go straight to a division. Uh, all those in favour of the motion moved, uh, Nielsen, Hamilton, as per the business paper, please raise your hand. Thank you. We have councillor Hamilton, Pendlefeeny, uh, Nielsen, Hay, Luxford, Chapel, Rosenfeld, Olive, McCafferty, Wilson, Sedd, Burst de Souza and Parker. I declare, uh, all those against, uh, is councillor Veach. I declare that carried. Thank you. Um, uh, it, do, do you wanna, do we wanna break or do you wanna continue? All right, thank you. Can I please have a procedural motion, um, moved Rosenfeld, uh, and McCafferty um, to, uh, return to consideration of urgent business? Um, uh, all those in favour of the procedural motion? Okay, all those against, declare that carried. Thank you very much. Uh, councillor Hamilton, could you please outline what it is that you are seeking to move as urgent business? And then, uh, outline to the meeting why you consider it as urgent?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I, um, put this motion to the meeting as urgent due to the fact that we know the date of the re- referendum is before the next council meeting. And so I would like for us to debate the motion on this council meeting because we're going to vote on the referendum on the fourteenth of October.
Thank you. Um, it being an urgency motion, uh, it requires both the concurrence of the chair uh, and the vote of councillors. Uh, I do consider, uh, this motion as urgent. Um, making no commentary on the content of the intended motion. Uh, the reasoning as to why I believe it is considered urgent is because there is no other facility other than the calling of an extraordinary meeting in order to do so, as the proposed referendum is on the fourteenth of October. Um, uh, once again, I'd like to reiterate, I make no comment on to this, uh, as to the substance of the particular motion moved, uh, by councillor or intended to be moved by councillor Hamilton. It being a procedural motion, I will now call, um, for a vote um, as to whether or not council considers it urgent. Uh, all those in favour? All those against? I declare the, uh, urgency, uh, motion carried. Uh, councillor Hamilton, could you please outline, oh, what it is that you're moving and then I'll call for a seconder, seconding councillor Rosenfeld. Councillor Hamilton.
Thank you very much. Um, so the background to this is we now know the referendum voting day is September, sorry, Saturday, the fourteenth of October. And I have spoken to the relevant director. We haven't spent all of the allocated money, so we did, um, this council did endorse and allocate twenty eight thousand nine hundred toward a yes vote. And what I'm proposing is that we use fifty percent of that money to, um, prom- equal promotion of the no vote. I think we have an opportunity now to provide equal exposure for the no vote to balance out the debate.
Thank you. Councillor Rosenfeld as the seconder. I then, sorry, before you speak, I saw a hand from councillor Chapel. Okay, Rosenfeld Chapel. Thank you, councillor Rosenfeld.
I should probably remember, initially I didn't actually agree with the council spending any money, uh, on this. Uh, but as it was agreed on, um, I, I think it more than appropriate that, uh, if we are to spend money, that we do uh, have equal promotion for the no vote. I don't like the fact that when you open the council website now, you've got yes, yes, yes everywhere. Um, and, uh, I really think it's, yeah, it needs to have, have equal promotion for the no vote. I've read a bit of the council, uh, the, the feedback when, um, um, the media, uh, the, um, Josh puts on, on the media about, about yes, and a lot of people saying, oh, please don't use my rate pays money. This is not, uh, uh, an adequate way to use my rate pays money. So if we are going to, at least we can, we can, uh, uh, advocate for both the yes and no.
Thank you. Uh, I saw councillor Chapel, then I'll go to councillor Nielsen.
Sorry, it was just a question about the previous motion, um, which I understood was council endorsing the yes vote and the funding was available with, um, the option that events could be put on for yes or no or neutral. Is that correct?
Um, what I will do as the mover of the motion, however, I will invite the director of community and culture and you're full to interrupt me if at any point that I'm incorrect. Um, it is, it was my intention and my interpretation as the mover of the motion um, to endorse, uh, to the community via communications channels and a range of other ones, uh, for a yes vote. Uh, however, the waiver of fees for the hire of council facilities, um, was for yes and no, uh, events. I'm not aware of any no events which, um, have, um, sought in order to do so. Um, but that's my interpretation. Through to the director of community and culture, uh, if there is any further information, clarification, as well as full cart blanch if anything I've said is incorrect. Okay, thank you. Um, are there, oh, uh, councillor Nielsen.
I just wanted to say that, um, I still feel very strongly in support of the yes vote. And I'm sure that the yes vote is going to be successful across New South Wales, hopefully across Australia. However, I do, um, acknowledge that, um, we have, um, said, or council has said that uh, we will waive fees for events that are wanting to occur in council halls and so on. I think that's perfectly appropriate. Uh, I don't think we as a council should be doing a great deal to be supporting the no vote. And I think the other thing is that, uh, we very strongly support our La Perouse Land Council and our La Perouse, our indigenous community. And I think that we in strong support of that should be obviously continuing supporting the yes vote. So I cannot in good conscience be supporting a strong council endorsement of a no vote. I just don't think it's appropriate.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Hamilton, would you wish to close the debate? Okay, thank you. Um, I will now, um, put, uh, the motion moved Hamilton, Rosenfeld. All those in favour? All those against? I declare the motion as lost. Thank you. Um, what I might actually do is we might adjourn for a brief five minute break if people want to do that and we'll return at, um, five two nine. Thank you.
I now reopen the Randwick Council meeting at nine oh nine P M. Thank you. Apologies to those listening online, it was a, an elongated five minutes. Thank you. We now return to. Okay, we move to C P thirty four slash twenty three Kensington North and West Randwick E seven H I A. Draft Development Control Plan challenged by councillor Luxford. Councillor Luxford, could you please outline what it is you're moving?
I don't want to move them.
Okay, before you do, can I, can I, okay, thank you. Can I please have a mover? Okay, thank you councillor Hamilton. I take it you're moving your recommendation on the business paper?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you councillor, um councillor Rosenfeld, thank you councillor Hamilton as the mover.
Moving as per the business paper, no further comments.
As per the business paper.
Thank you councillor Luxford.
Um, I'm just, uh, standing up here to say I cannot support this at all. Um, I'm. Deeply saddened that, um, these areas that we sought to have removed have been put back in again. Uh, overdevelopment, over everything, and it's all happening in Kensington again. Um, we have no guarantee here that this is not going to end up some sort of boarding house or student accommodation. Um, I think we're just overrun with it. It will not do nothing to enhance our suburb. It will do nothing to get us any better amenity. In Kensington, um, so I cannot support this and will not support it. And yeah, that's it.
Uh, thank you councillor Hay.
I'd like to echo the sentiments of councillor Luxford. Remember, of course councillors, that, uh, we, uh, in Kensington are getting all the worst parts of overdevelopment. But, um, none of the benefits. We are not getting an increase in the capacity of Kensington Public School. We are not getting a supermarket. We are getting more people crammed into an area with no services to compensate. Um, this is a bad policy and I will be voting against it.
Thank you, um councillor Veitch.
Um, councillors, I will be voting for this. This is the development control plans, not the L E P. I didn't vote in favour of the, uh, housing investigation areas. However, the controls that go in this, and we've had these fights over the last several years over K to K and the H I As. Between the L E Ps and the D C Ps. And in the end, perhaps not one of them, but I have voted for some of the D C Ps just to try and ensure. That there are some measures in place to mitigate the effects of some of these developments. Um, I have got one amendment which I've sent through to Mister Kelly. I will note, uh, that these D C Ps have incorporated amendments, um, I put up. In the other D C Ps, which is that at least thirty percent of the total number of dwellings. Within a development are to be one or two bedrooms or both. And that at least twenty percent of the total number of developments within a development are to be three or four more bedrooms. And twenty percent to be three bedrooms or more. So. In, in effect, uh, obviously there is no guarantee we can get that. However, it is something we're trying to do to ensure that we're not just getting. Studios, um, and hopefully some kind of diverse housing will be delivered. Uh, for members of our community. Um, my amendment, there are some good sustainability. Measures in terms of installing solar and batteries. This is where we need to go. To get rooftop solar and batteries on new builds is going to radically reduce the power bills for those residents. Um, if you live in a standalone home, uh, and you have the ability to put solar on. Not only are you reducing your emissions, but you are also drastically cutting your, your power bills. Uh, it is a game changer. So, um, it's a really good measure by the staff and I'd like to thank the, the staff. Uh, for putting some of these good measures in. Uh, and my additional dot point is that all new residential. Which is on page of the attachment. Uh, there's two attachments. One has the track changes and one doesn't. They're the identical documents, but it's the one without the track changes. Uh, uh, which is on page, whatever I said, ninety six. Which is a point K on under energy, which is all new residential developments are to include electric, gas cooktops, ovens and space heating systems where applicable. And must be clearly marked on D A plans. Again, if you have got, um, rooftop solar. And batteries hopefully going in these new bills, it makes total sense to then, uh, electrify, have electric appliances. Because that's the way, uh, you can, you know, actually benefit from, from having, uh, especially if you've got, uh. You know, uh, recycle air conditioning. That is the way you can truly benefit from having. Uh, the, the solar and so on there. So I hope, as I said, it's, this is less than ideal, but there are some good, good measures in this D C P. To try and make the best of a less than ideal situation, um, and hopefully get some real housing delivered. Uh, that will also deliver energy savings to our residents. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I have, uh, so before I go to councillor Rosenfeld, is there a second of the amendment? Second to councillor Chapel. Councillor Chapel, did you wish to speak to it? Okay, not a worry. Um, councillor Rosenfeld.
Just a question to the mover of the amendment. Um, I don't understand because you, is it electric or gas? Could you say include electric, gas cooktops?
Oh, thank you. That's a typo on my part. So thank you for picking that up. So if you could remove gas, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Sid.
Just two questions, one to the, to the mover and one to the, uh, director, acting director. Um, just, excuse my ignorance, space heating, what, what is that? Space heating system?
It's, it's just like a heater. So some people might have a gas heater. Actually, we don't need heaters, but if they are being put in. It would be like a reverse cycle air conditioner probably, probably rather than one of those ga- gas heaters, that's all.
And to the acting, um, is that, if this was to go through, is it achievable? Because it's not a bad amendment. I'm just saying. Is it something that can be put in the plan without having to delay to do whatever?
Thank you through you Mister Mayor. Um, at the moment, the current state requirements under the basics don't ban gas. Um, so, um, the, the D C P as written, which talks about encourage. Um, is what councillors had resolved in the previous version.
I have a follow-up question to the acting director of city planning. Is it your interpretation that this proposed amendment would prevent or re- or, or, sorry? Would request of developers, uh, the non-inclusion of gas items within residential development buildings?
Thank you Mister Mayor, yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, coun- councillor, so councillor, uh, councillor Veitch is able to respond, then I'll go to councillor Hamilton. Yep.
Um, I, my understanding that this is permissible, it is not banning it, but this is Waverley and Wallara. Have these exact same provisions in their new D C P. Um, it's, it's not banning gas and it's not removing the word encourage from point. Whatever it was. It's not removing the word encourage from point E. It's simply an additional one saying that electric appliances be, uh, installed. Um. So in theory, gas could still be connected to the building. However, there will be electric appliances. This is legal. And this has been adopted in the, I believe, certainly the Waverley and I think the Wallara D C Ps.
Sorry, ju- just to confirm, so this is, this has been, um. So, so I just want to clarify, this is the language which is modeled off the, uh, the Waverley provisions. Um, through to the relevant director, um, the question I have is. The interpretation of the Waverley provisions which have been raised in extensive public conversation, both in the media, uh, and, um. Uh, uh, around, that was, um, uh, broadly interpreted as a, a, a ban or prohibition on gas. Is that correct? Through to the relevant officer.
Thank you Mister Mayor, yeah, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Hamilton.
I, I just have a couple of things to clarify. Firstly, we haven't incorporated the same. Um, restrictions in our D C P. So we haven't followed the Waverley Wallara model in our D C P. Is that correct?
Through to the acting director of city planning.
Thank you Mister Mayor. No, we haven't followed the Waverley, um, example, which I believe is, um, based on the impacts of health. Health impacts of gas, using gas appliances in the house. Um, that would be questionable when it comes to a matter of interpretation, um, at the court. And how, how that, how that stands up in the court.
Uh, thank you. S- I, I apologize. Thank you. I've got councillor Nielsen. Just before I go to councillor Nielsen, were there any other hands up as well? Okay, councillor Nielsen.
Um, just following on from the point that councillor Hamilton made and just to, um, ask the, um, acting head of, um, planning to. Uh, reiterate if I've got it correctly, that you said that, uh, we are encouraging, um, the, the, can you use your correct words? I mean. The correct words, please.
Through to you Mister Mayor, yes, it's, um, encouraging is the terminology we're using at this stage, um. Because of the current, um, provisions in the state policy, yeah.
Why, why I won't be supporting the amendment, I mean, I support it in, in theory. Um, however, I just think that, um, we don't need to be acti- uh, putting in more, um. Restrictions because after all we are encouraging. I don't think any new residential developments are in fact going to be putting in gas cooktop, cooktops. However, um, we don't know what other people might be doing with their old. Properties trying to bring them up to scratch and so on. Maybe they're going to stay, stay with their current, um, gas appliances and so on. So anyway, I, I just, I'm not going to support the amendment even though. I probably, if I were building a new property, I would be doing exactly what you're proposing councillor Veitch. But I, I suggest that we don't add this into the, uh, as an extra point in the sustainability, um, clauses.
Thank you councillor Olive.
Uh, yeah, just a follow-up question on the fact that this is a, a health measure in the Waverley, um, D C P. Uh, to, um, the acting director of planning, um. Uh, that hasn't been tested at all, has it? Um, so therefore it could actually conceivably, you know, sort of. Uh, hold as a, as a, um, a measure, you know, sort of the, an enforceable measure in the D C P.
Through to the acting director of city planning.
Thank you Mister Mayor. No, it hasn't been tested to my knowledge in the, in the courts. It would be a matter that the courts would consider. Um, if there was, um, um, an appeal against one of those, you know, gas being one of the items of a, of an appeal, if it came to that.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers on the proposed amendment? Councillor Burst on the amendment.
On nineteenth of July, twenty twenty-two, in a landmark vote for Europe's climate and emergency policies. The European Parliament on Wednesday endorsed labing- labelling some gas and nuclear energy projects green. Allowing them access to hundreds of billions of euros in cheap loans and even state subsidies. Thank you.
Okay, okay, tha- can, thank, thank you councillors. Are there any further speakers on the amendment? There being no further speakers on the amendment, I'll now put the amendment, all those in favour of the amendment Veitch Chapel to add a new point K. All those, all those in favour? All those against? I declare the amendment lost. You, you actually, you are correct councillor, um, Veitch, it being a planning matter, um, we'll have to go straight to a division. All those in favour of the amendment? Okay, we have councillor Pendlefini, councillor Veitch, councillor Chapel. Councillor Olive, all those against? We have councillor Hamilton, Nielsen, Hay, Luxford. Rosenfeld, McCafferty, Wilson, Sid, Burst, Susan. Luxford, Rosenfeld, McCafferty, Wilson, Sid, Burst, Susa and. Parker, I declare the amendment lost. Uh, we now return to, uh, the motion moved, I believe. Hamilton, Rosenfeld. Are there any further speakers on the substantive debate? There being no further speakers. Councillor Hamilton, would you like to close the debate? Thank you very much. There being no further speakers, uh, I'll now put it. It being a planning matter, we'll go straight to a division. Uh, all those in favour, please raise your hand. Uh, councillor, uh. All those in favour, raise your hand. Okay, councillor Hamilton, uh, Pendlefini, Nielsen, Veatch. Chapel, Rosenfeld, Olive, McCafferty, Wilson, Sid, Burst, D'Souza and Parker, I declare, okay, all those against. Uh, councillor, uh, Haye and, uh, Luxford, I declare the motion carried. Thank you. We now move to, um, uh, C S thirty-seven slash twenty-three. Shaw Reserve Playground Assessment, challenged by councillor Haye. Councillor Haye, could you please outline what it is that you're moving?
Um, Mister Kelly, I've sent you through, uh, a proposed, uh, amended wording. Um. Now, I'd like everyone to, uh, go to the business paper, um. You see that, uh, in the executive summary, it talks about, and in the proposed wording, it talks about the. Adopted place-based strategy. If we go to page eighty-nine. Uh, of the business paper, what you'll see is at the top it says extract from draft play stress, uh, what? Sorry, uh, it says extract from draft play stress. Sorry. The draft play stre- the draft play space strategy. Got there eventually. Now, now if, if we could all look at the last column of that table, it says. Score out of ten. Now, that's quite surprising to me because here, the document we all voted on last month. If we jump to page twenty-six, you'll see the quality score is listed as low. In what we actually voted on last month. On all the playgrounds. So there's no actual score given in the strategy that we were, that we actually voted on. So, uh, what I, uh, I'm not sure, uh, how the mix-up happened. Uh, but I'm uncomfortable and I think everyone on council should be uncomfortable, uh. Uh, letting us go through implying that we voted on the scores as listed on page eighty-nine. Uh, when we in fact did not. Um, then, uh, if we continue in the report, there is on page thirty-five, sorry, I don't have that in front of you. Uh, this is what we actually did vote on. This was the, uh, priority playground upgrades. You'll see that, uh, number seven is Shaw Reserve. So we actually voted. That even if the equipment may not rank, uh, a- as being the most urgent. It's a high population centre, there are, are other factors, and we agree that it should be seventh in the list of priorities. Um, this isn't just a, uh, a westward thing. You've got number one is Northward, Allison Park Playground, number two. Grant Reserve in Coogee, number three, Walmart Reserve in Little Bay, uh, in Southward. So, uh. We've already agreed on a strategy which places this at seventh. Um, I don't like the implication that it should go. At the end. Now, um, also, the, there's a slight, uh, interesting wording here. It says that these, uh, playgrounds should be renewed within the next ten to fifteen years. Now, there's two ways of reading that sentence. You could say, uh, let's complete all these ten upgrades in the next fifteen years. Or let's wait ten years and then do it in the next five. Now, I, uh, I, I'm happy to, uh, uh, accept that it means that we have. We try to do all of them within the next fifteen years. I just wanna change the wording ever so slightly to, uh, on the draft place. Play space strategy to take into account that we are in fact definitely pre- proceeding on these parks. Uh, and trying to complete all ten upgrades within fifteen years, rather than having to wait ten years and then proceed another five.
Do we have a seconder of the motion moved by councillor Haye? It's seconded by councillor Rosenfeld, I saw. Um, are there any further speakers? Thank, thank you. Um, councillor Nielsen?
Just feel a little bit, um, uncomfortable, um. Uh, supporting, um, the motion the way that's put by councillor Haye. I think he's perhaps picked up on some very good points. However, I don't think that, uh, wording it in this way is terribly, it's not his fault. Um, that the wording's complicated. Uh, I think I would need to be looking at the, um. The playground proposal again, the dra- draft play space strategy programme again before I would be able to. Feel comfortable supporting, um, the, the comments, um. I'm actually happy with the business, the recommendation on the business paper in that. The work will be done, scheduled within the strategy that we have. In terms of, um, prioritizing our various, um, areas, which does give us flexibility as well because. Sometimes there can be more damage because can be a stormwater issue or flooding or some other sort of issue. So. Sometimes some other playground might be coming higher on the rank than had been, um, previously. So now I, I guess I'll foreshadow that, uh, should this, um, motion of councillor Haye, uh, not be successful, I'd be just. Moving as per the business paper.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no. So councillor Haye, um, challenged the item. He's since moved. The, the recommendation on the business paper in an amended fashion. Um, with additional points, um, which is outlined to the meeting. The recommendation on the business paper. Exclusively reads that the scheduling of the Shaw Reserve Playground Renewal will be undertaken in accordance with our asset management principles. And the recently adopted play strategy. So this incorporates additional language, uh, into the motion. Thank you. Uh. I saw some other hands up, my apologies. Um, so there's councillor Veatch. Are, are there any further speakers on the motion moved Haye Rosenfeld? Okay, councillor Ro- Haye, do you wish to close the debate?
Um, just, just very quickly, um, is there any further comment, uh, that would the, um, general manager or the director of cities, uh, services would like to make?
Um, a- a- as, as a point of clarification or contribution to the debate perhaps?
If there was a particular issue, sorry, if there's a particular issue with the wording of the motion that, uh. Is unclear or could, uh, be assisted.
Through to the, uh, general manager.
Yeah, Mister Mayor, my understanding of the intent of, of councillor Haye's motion is to ensure that. The council as an organisation doesn't go and do, uh, do nothing for ten years and after ten years, or the last five years to all the playgrounds. To ensure that we do it in an orderly fashion over a fifteen-year period to attempt to get all the playgrounds completed. That's my understanding of the intent of what you're, what you're putting forward.
But wouldn't council be doing that anyway? Through you to the general manager?
Mister General Manager?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, yes, I think just, I think what councillor Haye's trying to do is just to clarify for the council that we actually are going to do it that way.
Thank you. Councillor Veatch?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to support this motion and, and particularly point C, like. Continue to de- deliver playground upgrades in a timely manner. Kids only use playgrounds within a very specific period of time. And if they're upgraded in ten or fifteen years, it's actually just too late for a whole lot of kids. And we're now sort of hopefully getting wheels reserve. Uh, fixed up, which is in not really bad state. Um, I actually think playground upgrades should be prioritized. Just because there's such a small, small window of time. Where the, the, the target demographic is able to, to utilise them, yeah, our, our children. It makes such a big difference. When you have that new equipment and, uh, you know, the Fitzgerald Park is just Fitzpatrick Park. There were just, if, if you were there on that day, there was probably about two. No, it felt like there were just thousands of families and kids just converging on this little. Space and having a wonderful, uh, time. It was such an exciting moment for these kids. Um, so I don't, we, we should really be trying to actually probably. Put more money into, um, upgrading our playgrounds and not just doing it every, you know, ten or fifteen years. And, uh, it's nice to be reminded of this place-based strategy and, and see that we've got a few. Uh, of the playgrounds looking to be upgraded to a neighbourhood playground. So, yeah. Anything we can do to, to get movement on this would be great.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Haye, would you like to close the debate? Okay, thank you. I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Uh, c- councillor Nielsen, councillor Nielsen, thank you, thank you. Ca- all councillors, thank you. All comments through the chair. I'm only here for a little bit longer. All comments through the chair. Thank you. Um. Uh, C S thirty-eight slash twenty-three, proposed relocation of A F L from Pioneers Park to Heffron Park. Uh, yes, um, moved councillor Chapel. Do I have a seconder? Yep, thank you. Uh, do I have a second, uh, couns- uh, sec- councillor Olive?
Uh, sorry, Mister Mayor, I'd just like to move this in amended fashion, um. And I'm moving that we postpone consideration of the item. Um, I have been in consultation today with members of the Randwick Saints Football Club. Um, who are one of the clubs that would be majorly affected by the proposal as the team whose home ground is currently Pioneers Park. Um, and their current feeling is they, um, are not supportive of the proposal in its current form. They do not have a particular desire to be based at Heffron Park. Um, they support their junior side having expansion at Heffron Park, which is clearly needed. Um, for additional facilities, but as this all appears interlinked with moving that club out of there, um. They've asked that we defer this just for some additional conversations to happen, um, with the staff to make sure that we're actually delivering for all of the codes. And all of the levels. Um, I do have comments from the president of the club available, um, if anybody needs, um. Yeah, that's probably it. So I'd just ask for your support.
Uh, thank you. Uh, the seconder of the motion? Thank you. Um, with the indulgence of the meeting, um, uh, I have, um, spoken to both the presidents. Of Maruba Saints, uh, and Randwick Saints in relation to this. Um, there is, um, broad, um, support for. I- improved A F L facilities. However, uh, it is my view that councillor Chapel's, um, proposed amendment does have some considerable sense just to progress the conversation. Uh, and put a little bit more meat in the bone in terms of the ongoing consultation which is there. Um, I, I think the report, um, as drafted. It i- is pretty good, but I think it would be in, uh, council's, uh, good stead to, um, have a momentary pause just to, uh, continue those conversations. Uh, so that we can have a more fulsome, uh, report to consider at a, a future date. So, um, with the indulgence of the meeting, um, I. Thank you for, uh, letting me add that contribution. Uh, councillor Sid.
Mister Mayor, I won't oppose the, the delay, but I am a bit confused because, um. When I read this, I thought this is fantastic because all sporting clubs will endeavour to have their seniors and juniors together. It's, uh, fantastic. Gives a real community feel. The, uh, especially if your mums and dads play and the kids play and everyone gets to watch at the same spot. And all the rest of it. And the way that we planned to build this ground was, seemed like it was real sensational and. My confusion stems from, it actually came from the senior A F L and the consultation and they were. The consultation occurred with senior A F L team and they were all for it. The junior A F L were all for it. Then we went to soccer and they were all for it because they were getting, Oztag was consulted, everyone's been consulted. So obviously there's been, something has been a little bit gone astray. I mean, a lot of planning went into this, a lot of consultation. And then all of a sudden, I can only think that one or two people just didn't like the idea of it, but if they wanna hold it, they can hold it. Because the good thing is, especially with A F L, Mister Mayor, they would, on request, I am sure they will put a lot of money towards it. Um, and that's why, again, why I got a bit excited. I thought we could have the seniors and the juniors together and the A F L would probably pay for the lot. Because they're flush with cash and they like spending it. So it's disappointing that we do hold off because we could have had a great proposal here. And I know that, I'm sure soccer would have loved to have two more fields, would have been a great proposal for the. Community and I just don't understand how they asked for it to happen and then all of a sudden they asked for it to be delayed. But anyway, these things happen.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Chapel is the mover of the motion. Thank you. I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Uh, we now move to C C twenty-one. Slash twenty-three Randwick Art Collection, challenged by councillor McCafferty. Uh, councillor McCafferty, could you please outline what it is you are moving?
So I will, um, be amending the recommendation on the business paper, um, and then I would also like to speak to the report itself. Um, amending the recommendation to the business paper to that the Randwick Art Collection audit be acknowledged as read and noted. And then I'd just like to make some comments.
Second to councillor Hamilton. Councillor McCafferty, please continue.
Firstly, I'd like to thank the council officers as well as staff at, at, uh, La Perouse Museum, Roxanne and Alana. And councils inventory valuation experts who I've never heard of until yesterday, McWilliams and Associates. For their work in supporting the preparation of this report to council. The report identifies that council has forty-two artworks listed in a fair market value inventory. Forty-six built environment artworks across suburbs, twenty-five artworks at the Prince Henry Centre. And thirty-two artworks at the Randwick Community Centre. Further, the report concludes. That council does not have a formal art collection and what council does have is not of significance and is of. Quote, low value, end quote. I commend this desktop audit to council of council's, uh, portfolio of artwork. Such that it is. So, council does not have any Arthur Streetens or work by Tom Roberts lying around. Not as council have twentieth century Australian born greats like Brett Whiteley, Jeffrey Smart, Emily Kame, Kanga Wai. Or Albert Namajira in the portfolio such as it is. Council has no Banksies hanging on a wall or in a cupboard. In recommending the appointment of an external consultant to guide the growth and management of a Randwick art collection. At an approximate cost of twenty-two thousand dollars, the report further notes that that would be of, quote. Limited community benefit, end quote. I would suggest that it is actually our job as councillors to deliver community benefit. Coming as it does at a time when it is recognized that Australians all over the country are tightening their belts. The suggestion that councillors endorse this plan to establish a formal collection and a policy to support it. Sends a strong, the strong signal to, to our ratepayers and the community that we as councillors just don't have. Any regard for their money and we don't have any regard for cost. What's more, the suggestion is that council uses the hard-earned money paid by our ratepayers to take the advice of external consultants. In, uh, the context of recent reports in the media of the E Ys and P W Cs. Advising state and federal government who have been exposed in the media as motivated by gilding their own cages with their fees. And entrenching themselves in government. So, we, if we use the hard-earned money paid by our ratepayers. To take the advice of external consultants about supporting the growth of a Randwick art collection, what is the message that we send? At this time, I suggest it would be supremely arrogant to embark on this course of action and it sends all the wrong signals. To the worthy residents of Randwick L G A. Hence my amendment, that the Randwick Art Collection audit be acknowledged as read and noted.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Hamilton is the seconder.
I can co- with everything that councillor McCafferty has said. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? I take it councillor Pendlefini, you have your hand up?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to add an, I wanted to move my, an amendment that I'd sent through to David.
Uh, thank you. Uh, okay, uh. Yep, can I just confirm councillor Pendlefini that what is on the screen is the totality of the amendment?
Yeah, that's right.
All right. Can I? Um, Mister Kelly, could you please go up to the motion moved, uh, by councillor McCafferty? Okay, so the motion moved by councillor McCafferty has exclusively has the words that the Randwick Art Collection. Audit and policy proposal be, report be received. Had exclusively has the words that the Randwick Art Collection Audit and Policy Proposal be, Report be received and noted. Okay, councillor Pendlefini, could Mister Kelly, could you now go back to councillor Pendlefini's amendment? Can I confirm that the totality of your amendment? Is the words there or is your intention to include the words on the business paper? With a new clause C to be added, which reads that the Randwick City Council collection co- policy be considered. Uh by the new head of the arts and culture. Uh over the next twenty four uh months to potentially mitigate consultation fees. Could I just confirm that councillor? Okay, so so what what councillor Pendlefini is seeking to move as an amendment has a point A, a point B and a point C. Okay, uh moved councillor Pendlefini, secretary Nielsen, councillor Pendlefini, could you please talk to your amendment?
Yeah, um so I brought up this um idea of the um Randwick. Um council art collection, um and more, I think the substance of the motion was. Um so that we could start to see uh some artwork from um the collection. Being shown around um. Uh the council buildings, so you know, in our meeting rooms to, you know. I don't know, go alongside or replace the eye care sign. Um you know, in our foyers, just like we have at um Prince Henry Centre. Um so that councillors could have artworks in their rooms, much like many um. Of the council buildings and council chambers around Australia. Um and so it was great to get this um overview that, you know, currently it's not in, you know, any kind of. Um valuable form. I mean, it doesn't always um have to be valuable to be on the wall. Um a lot of the great works that people have donated, we've got an incredible um group of artists. That reside in our L G A, including some of the most, almost. First Nations artists, some of the oldest First Nations artists. Um whose work can be seen all across the country, the Shell Works. Um. That uh I just couldn't believe um the history um of those artists. So I guess um the um the point of the the. Motion was more to see how we could facilitate its growth over the, you know, long future. But also start to to um to have a policy that would allow us to to loan those works. And put them on our walls, even if, I mean, I I um am very much in the arts. And I personally don't collect works because of its value, I collect it because of what I like to see in the artists that I work with in my business. So that was the point. Um and I agree that I don't, I would hate to see personally the money go to a consultant. Because, you know, we don't have a lot of money and um it's not, it's not great for those small amounts of money to go out to a consultant. I think that the head of arts and culture, if we extend this um idea of the collection. And the policy that could see us loan the works around our buildings. Um to, you know, beautify the spaces and also show our visitors of the amazing works that we, artists that we have in our area. Um if we extend the timeframe, I spoke to um Katie about this. It it would mean that the head of arts and culture could look at the new position. Could look at the possibility that they could actually do that themselves. Because it's not, you know, really a big, something that a consultant is needed for. So I do agree um with councillor McCafferty that, you know, we wouldn't wanna spend that small amount of money, you know, like twenty or forty thousand dollars. We could get heaps of works, you know, it's the the entire value and more. Um so yeah, I hope you will consider that. It would be wonderful to see artists work around council buildings, in our meeting rooms. Um in our chambers, uh in our offices, things like that. And I think what it does is start to reflect the community, the um value that we place on art. You know, if you can't see it, that common thing, you can't see it, then you don't think about it. So, you know, it's great to go to the Prince Henry Se- Centre and see the wrapped work by um that artist. So I can't think of because I'm not feeling that well. Um you know, y- y- you just love to see work on, I love to see work on the wall. I think it it creates a really nice environment and currently we kind of have eye care things up. Um so it'd be great to have a bit more time with this and see what the head, the new exciting head of arts and culture, whoever that might be. Might think about this, um.
Thank you. Um councillor Nielsen is the second, she reserves her right. Um I have councillor D'Souza, then I, I I, you do, I have councillor D'Souza, then I have councillor Sid, then I have councillor Veach. Thank you very much councillor Sid, councillor D'Souza. Thank you very much councillor Sid, councillor D'Souza. No, councillor D'Souza, you have the floor. Thank you, I've said that three times. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Mister Mayor, we've have one of the most successful councils in New South Wales. And part of the reasoning behind that is that we have some core values. And those core values, those building blocks, that foundation on which this council was built, was our eye care values. Without having to ask the councillor what eye care stands for, let me tell you. I stands for integrity and we now all know how important that is. Customer focus. We're always talking about looking after our people, looking after our customers. Well, isn't that important? I think very important. It's pivotal to our success. Accountability, we've got Steve in here and others. We're constantly asked to account for what we do, whether it's financial accounting or accounting for our actions. As parents, we know how important accountability is. R, the R stands for respect. Respect councillors, respecting our fellow councillors, our staff and our residents. So, and of course, the E stands for what we do best, excellence, excellence in the workplace. Excellence as a council. So eye care cannot just be wiped away and replaced with art. I support art. But more importantly, when our workers, and I won't go to the time when I was mayor, people remind me, I may say that much too often, it was a long time ago. But that was so important when we went to all stops to Randwick and did other things. I would often say sometimes in the street, do you know what our eye care? You know, the simple men in green knew what eye care stood for and that made all the difference. To be successful, sometimes you need to believe. And our general manager and our staff, um and Toddion with his workers. They've impressed on our workers, eye care, integrity, customer fo- focus. Accountability, respect and excellence. Now that's ingrained into our workers, into their mental psyche. Let us not forget its importance or its relevance. I support art, but I don't support the removal of eye care or its signage. I'll leave it at that, Mister Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Sid, your question.
I've got a question to councillor Pendlefini because I agree totally with what she's proposed and I think it's a good proposal. But if C remains, then it negates A because I I was taking it from your, from your, that's my speech. That you wanted to remove the consultant and put up the head of culture to um to mitigate the consultant fees. And to do it over twenty four, and it's a good idea to do it over twenty four months, gives time and all the rest of it, not rushed. So I totally agree with C, but if we leave C, I'm just asking you, does that mean you will remove A? I'm not telling you what to do, I'm just saying that it gates A.
Through to the mover of the amendment.
Okay, yeah, sure, sorry, um that that sounds good. Um you know, and it could be twenty four to thirty six months. I I absolutely understand the budgetary constraints. Um yeah, I guess I just wanted to also add that the motion isn't about taking down or not honouring. Eye care as well, so. So yeah, you can, if you think it's best to remove A, then that's fine. Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I don't. I'd prefer not to, the money not to go to a consultant on, in this case.
So, okay, so y- y- uh. Just, just so I can confirm, I will throw to councillor Nielsen in a second. Okay, before, I'll indulge councillor Nielsen. Councillor Nielsen, your question?
Sorry, um to you councillor Pendlefini, and I'm just um looking at the wording there from uh point A. And I thank um councillor Sid for bringing it to our attention. But I think you possibly still want to um include some of the wording there. Um that, so maybe it is that council note that um. A formal, that the, that, what are we, what I'm trying to say, that with, a formal audit needs to be undertaken.
Yeah.
Is required, yes, that form, thank you very much councillor. Are you okay with that too councillor Pendlefini? Yes, okay, so yeah, formal audit um is required. So a formal au- audit, after audit, um uh Mister Kelly. After, a formal audit is required and then, and significant assessment of blah blah blah. Does that make sense? Um. That's better, okay. And you're okay with that councillor Pendlefini?
Yeah.
So after a formal audit is required, please, um Mister Kelly. Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, thanks.
We might not need, might not need B either, if it, uh unless um. Through to the um director of culture, like whether that's necessary or.
Um through to the director of community and culture, knowing what you know is the preferences of the mover of the amendment. Could you please outline your interpretation as to the effect of orders in front of you?
It would not be required.
Thank you. Uh I have as hands up on the uh amendment. Um so just to confirm, councillor Pendlefini, you retain A in a slightly updated fashion, is that correct? Okay, B is remaining in that, in the words which is there. Can I just confirm that? I'm not, I'm not sure, sorry. You're the mover of the.
I don't even think it's ne- I think the director was just saying it's not needed, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we wouldn't be budgeting for consultants, so that could be taken out. And then it could be looked at, yeah.
That's fine. And and point C remains? Oh, so point C becomes point B. Okay. I now have a hand up from councillor Veatch, who wanted to previously make a contribution. I have councillor Lux.
Point of order, uh point of order, yes, as councillor Mc, it's up to councillor McCafferty to accept uh councillor Pendlefini's amendment.
Or actually, oh no, sorry, sorry, to be, uh. So, ho- hold on, hold on, hold, thank you. Councillor Hay has, I think, reasonably suggested, and to be fair, I was following the debate, that I should have asked. Councillor McCafferty whether or not she accepts the proposed amendment.
I'd just say that for um contextual integrity, I think B should come before the A in the amendment.
And were that to be the case, you would accept it?
Yes, indeed.
Okay, all right. Councillor Pendlefini, are you happy to rearrange the order which you're proposing?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So you now accept it, incorporate it. Um there's now no amendment in front of the council. Um. Um. They, this, they, they, they remain. Um. Okay, so there's now no amendment, which means that the motion as moved by councillor McCaffalty, McCafferty. Uh has, has uh three points. Am I? Yes, yeah, that's sorry, hold, before you do that, I just wanna actually see it just out so we can have a look. Received and noted. Uh does that make sense or does the top bit need to come out? Yeah, that the report be received and. So, sorry, just.
I'm assuming and I don't know when or if a new head of, head of arts and culture is going to be appointed. That would be, that would give us some context, surely.
Okay, um councillor Ha- Hamilton, do you wish to still ask your question?
Just very briefly, by including point B and C into. Uh councillor McCafferty's amendment, wouldn't that then be stating that, find it's the, but report's been um received and noted. Actually, I realise I'm not being succinct, um but we would still be committing the twenty two thousand dollars, isn't that correct?
Um through to the uh. What I, what I'll do is I'll go through to the mover of the motion as to her intention. And then I will ask um the general manager uh whether or not he concurs with that interpretation. The mover of the motion, councillor McCafferty?
No, actually, no, I'd like to inter- intervene here, sorry, because I'm asking the question through to yourself. You're diverting the question back to councillor McCafferty. And I would, I would like to confirm that by including the consideration of the new head. And the cons- and this is mitigating consultation fees. And I'm asking, would that mean that we still would spend the twenty two thousand? So it's not back to councillor McCafferty, it's to the relevant officer.
Okay, so it's to the relevant officer. Um the question through to the relevant officer.
If the head of arts and culture who um will be in place by November, end of November this year, um was to do this work. Then no consultancy would be required. If there was a further cost, a report would come back to council. You could um consider adding in that any costing would would come back potentially.
Okay, thank you. So I think if you can add that line.
I think it's appropriate for a new head of arts and culture to basically have a look at everything and do a bit of an audit. Them, eh, you know, as part of their onboarding.
Okay. There, there's a question from councillor D'Souza. Councillor D'Souza, would you like to ask your question and then if you wanna ask a follow up?
I just wanna know about the, there's that eye, eye care signage. What, what was the outcome there?
Okay, um question through to the general manager um from councillor D'Souza.
Hey Mister Mayor, I clearly understood from councillor Pendlefini, she was just using that as an example. And then she clarified that there was no intention to remove any eye care signage.
Um with your indulgence, Mister Mayor, given that we've now confirmed. That if there isn't a head of arts and culture, I believe that it would be pertinent to add an additional line there. Signaling that no further cost should be incurred until there is.
Um councillor McCafferty is the mover of the motion. Do, would you like to incorporate that language into your motion?
Yes, I would.
Okay, thank you. As a new point D. Okay, thank you. Um councillor, oh, okay, because you suggested it. Are there any further speakers on? Uh. That, 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 that is, that is. I, I didn't hear that, so councillor Veach, could you please continue?
Uh uh so I just wanna find out, do we actually, councillor, does councillor Pendlefini support point D, the new point D? I know, but I know you do.
Um so, so, sorry, so, sorry, just, just to confirm. Questions can I only be poured to the movers of a motion or through to um the relevant staff on it? Um I I'd suggest maybe take it electronically.
Uh I would like to speak to the motion. Councillors, I, I. Art is and culture is important. We have, our L G A is full of artists, musicians, performers. We have Nida there, we have U N S W. Uh I work at the Boon Gate Gallery and I can tell you that. Having people in your area make art, having a place for them to show it, which we will in Blenheim House. We're gonna have a new art centre, hopefully one day, it's been endlessly deferred. And then for that body to occasionally purchase some of that work. And it is life changing for artists. I see it. I mean, I, I say, you know, it's, it's a bit of a joke now, but it is easier to get an exhibition in the, if you're an inmate at Long Bay Jail. Than in Randwick than it is if you're just a normal resident, because we've got a gallery there. People come in and buy work and the department collects some of that work. And it is, it is, it is sought after. We've got an amazing uh collection of work. Uh and it gets, some of it is stored. And some of it gets put up in ministers' offices, it gets put up in commissioners' offices, it gets put up in secretaries' offices. It is valued and last year, some of you would have come to our thirtieth anniversary exhibition. Which featured work from that collection collected over thirty years. It is, and that's part of our L G A. And I would like to think that this uh wonderful motion that councillor Pendlefini put up uh a few months ago. Could be the start of something similar for Randwick. Where we have, and hopefully in, in a couple of years' time, we're gonna have our gallery and hopefully there's gonna be more. We're gonna have local artists who actually have a place to finally exhibit their work. They will be able to hopefully sell it to local residents and whoever wants to come along. And some of those key works could be purchased, probably at not, at a, at a very reasonable cost, by Randwick Council. Goes into a collection, gets put up on walls, and then every so often, you might go, wow, and it's, and it's history. Right there, you know, and you get statements, you contextualise it. And it is a record of life in Randwick over a period of time. But if it is not formed in a collection, all of that disappears. You just don't have it. You know, when we look at history books and we look at, wow, what happened to Randwick in the past, what was Randwick like in the past? Not only we look at photos, but we look at artworks that were made. It's how we understand our history apart from anything else. So, um, you know, I don't understand some of the statements that were made, uh, earlier on in this debate. Just saying that it was a waste of money, because I don't think art is a waste of money. And I have seen for my, in my own eyes and can attest to the life-changing event that happens. When you sell something, even if it's a small amount, you cannot believe what that means to people. And sometimes it can completely change the direction of someone's life. So, um, I really hope we can get behind this and that we, you know. Our new head of arts and culture will actually take this on board, that it's not just some little side gig. But something that's going to say, we're gonna walk the talk, we support art and culture, and yes, we're gonna buy some. Of your art as well. That's what we need to do and, um, and promote it and be proud of it. So, please support this motion, and I, and I please support the development of a Randwick art collection policy. That we can all be proud of and that our local residents will be just so pleased, uh, to be a part of. So, and I hope we can actually go out and say, this is a good idea, not a waste of money. Thank you.
Thank you, um, okay, there's now been a request to put it, I heard at that time, um, we have had. Okay, a procedural motion, put all those in favour, all those against, declare that carried. Councillor McCafferty, do you wish to close the debate?
Uh, no, but for the record, I would like to say that the quotes that I included in my address, um, concerning the. The merits of the collection and, uh, its value, the fact that it was of no value. Were quotes from, um, our own experts.
Thank you. Um, I will now, um, call for a vote. All those in favour of the motion moved McCafferty-Hamilton, please say aye. All those against, declare that carried, thank you. C C twenty-two slash twenty-three, review of the public comment to the media policy was also challenged by councillor McCafferty. Councillor McCafferty, could you please outline what is you're moving?
I'd like to move the motion, um, as it appears, um, and just to say that I heartily support this report. And the draft public comment to the media policy, which it provides to us. I deeply commend the fact that it unequivocally sets out who at council has the right to deal with media. And who has the right to speak and the limits of these terms. The draft policy is absolutely clear. Councillors do not speak on behalf of council and can express their own views to the media, provided that is. And I'll repeat that, provided that the decisions of council are outlined in full. That means these reports by councillors, when they speak on behalf of council, should not be skewed and should be without editorial comment. That is all I have to say. Other than that, I, uh, just commend the report to you.
Thank you. Councillor Hamilton as the seconder.
No, I just concur. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any, uh, councillor Sid?
Actually, I concur with, uh, the councillor's comments because, and actually, the policy is quite good. And I'm quite happy that the actual point one, um, where the mayor shall be at all times the official spokesman of the council. Which is our policy, which has happened for a long time now, Mister Mayor. Um, the, the thing that intrigues me is that, and it, and I'm so happy that this stays here, is that. The mayor at all times represents the council and is the council. And as, um, I know, and councillor D'Souza knows, and councillor Nielsen knows, and yourself. That sometimes you have to put personal opinions and party opinions aside, and you have to go by the resolution of council. So the mayor, um, has the honour of talking about, to the media about council resolutions. Such as if there was a resolution, as we've got tonight, that brought our road be used for Sundays and public holidays. Um.
There's nothing else.
Well, after the public consultation. I keep getting confused because I've got a thousand emails about it, but anyway. Um, that the mayor would have to go out there and sprue why it's such a good idea, um. And if something happens that is contrary to their own opinions, they have to go by the resolution of council. So it's good that the mayor still represents the council, the mayor has to go out there and prove it. Um, if things like, you know, if council decides there's a resolution that we keep shark nets. Then that mayor has to go out there and prove to the community why it's such a good idea. The same as removing a cycleway, the mayor will have to go out there and prove why it's like getting, uh, moving a cycleway is a good idea. Um, all these come into it, you, you're no longer your own person, you are the council and you are our spokesman. So, I'm looking forward to, um, this policy being enacted. And, uh, good luck to the next bit, thank you.
Thank you. There being no further speakers. Councillor McCafferty, do you wish to close the debate? Okay, now put it, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried, thank you. Okay. Okay, uh, C O forty-four slash twenty-three, long-term financial plan challenged by councillor Chapel. Councillor Chapel, could you please outline what is you're moving?
As per the business paper.
Thank you. Um, do we have a seconder? Uh, councillor Luxford, thank you, seconded. Um, councillor Chapel?
Um, just very briefly, um, two things. Firstly, just to say thank you to the team. Because obviously there is a significant amount of work in this, um, and I think, uh, particularly the briefing on the plan. Now that we actually, I, well, everybody else may be already understood, I need the briefing to understand what was going on. And I feel a little bit more confident about kind of where we're going and how we're balancing things. Um, the other thing I just wanted to know is, um, the note is the, the community response we have in this. Is actually some of the more sophisticated community response we get. Um, and people have really engaged with what is quite a complex piece of material, um, quite deeply. And I just wanna thank the council officers for engaging with those responses. I know it's not possible really to amend a. Long-term financial plan in face of a couple of comments, but, um, you know, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, uh, councillor, uh, councillor Luxford is the seconder? Councillor Luxford, do you wish to speak to it? Okay, thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I'm gonna put it, all those in favour? All those against, declare they've carried. Yeah, well done, congratulations, Stephen. And you thought you were gonna get some questions? All right, thank you. C O forty. C O forty-eight slash twenty-three, fraud and corruption framework policy challenged by councillor Olive.
Uh, yeah, um, I, I just wanted a bit of guidance on this. But, uh, I suppose, from, I suppose, other councillors. Because, uh, what we've got here is a fraud and corruption, um, uh, framework and policy, control framework and policy. But it's not really complete without the guidelines, and the guidelines are not presented here at all. Um, uh, the guidelines, uh, uh, contain detailed actions and responsibilities. Um, and so we're voting on to, on this, to support this. But, um, I, I talked to, um, uh, the coordinator, coordinator administration. Coordinator administration, Julie, um, about this. And she sent them to me as a member of Eric, and then further to that, she'd put them, you know, on the hub. Um, for councillors, but in a confidential fashion, next to all the other confidential information. So, um, you might be voting on this without having viewed the guidelines. Or you could, you know, sort of, um, uh, defer this till the next meeting after having the opportunity to go and have a look at that. And, you know, sort of, I, I, I could just put this, um, uh, put a, a, uh, up as a, um. Uh, a motion to, uh, defer. Um, I, I, I just wonder. Can get a sense, you, okay, um, yeah, okay, seems like the floor wouldn't mind that. So what I'll do is I'll put this up as a, a motion to defer for one month.
Fair enough, um, yeah, there is a, uh, what I might do is question the mover, just a point of clarification through to the general manager. And then I will, um, throw councillor Nielsen's point of clarification to the mover.
Thanks, Mister Mayor. Councillors, if you wish, in the confidential session, I'm happy to provide the reasons why, why this particular document is confidential.
Okay.
Question then, if, sorry, if you don't answer all the questions, general manager, that we might want, we could still then, could we move for defer or for. For the briefing or whatever, yeah, okay.
Through to the.
Cause my question had been just, so it was, was that could we have a briefing? But I think we can essentially have this.
Can, can I, just having sought the advice from the general manager. Could I have a procedural motion to move into confidential session prior to the, um, putting of the motion moved, Olive Nielsen?
I can, I can call for a procedural motion to move into confidential session.
I understand that. Uh, any, any councillor, if you would like, can move a procedural motion to move into consul- confidential session.
We, we can do it, would, would prefer to do it now or at the end of, with the rest of it? Okay, well, let's, let's, let's just do it now.
A procedural motion?
Yes, I'd like, I'd like to move a procedural motion that we move in the co- into the confidential session to the.
Thank you, through, okay, I, I understand that councillor Nielsen, but I still have to put it. Uh, councillor Hay, uh, Luxford, all those in favour of the procedural motion?
But you're going to then, we're going to confidential, we've got a few people listening in to, um, illustrious debate that we're having here. They have to turn off while we go into confidential, when we've got a number of items, other items that are coming into confidential. Why can't we do this when we're in confidential?
We, we can. The procedural motion was to move, um, to confidential session now. It's been carried. Okay, thank you, um, I, I can understand that, um, it's been carried. Could we please now turn off the order of recording? Um, before you do that, for those who are listening, we are moving briefly into confidential session as to deal with particular items in relation to this. We will then return, uh, to the agenda, moving through the remainder of the public items, uh, along the business paper, okay? Okay, I can now confirm that we are now, um, back on and streaming. Uh, we are, we are still on C O forty-eight slash twenty-three. Uh, the Director of Corporate Services report fraud, corruption framework and policy. Are there any further speakers on, uh, the motion moved, uh, Olive Chapel to defer to the October council meeting? There being no further speakers, councillor Olive, would you like to close the debate? Thank you very much. I'll now put it, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried, thank you. Thank you. We now move on to notices, uh, of motion. Uh, beginning with N M sixty-two slash twenty-three, notice of motion from councillor D'Souza nominating Kevin Kelly as an inductee into the Hall of Sporting Champions.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Mister Mayor, the motion speaks for itself, but I'd like, thank you, Mister Danny. Uh, thank you very much. So I just, to be respectful to the panel, I think in. Point C, the word recommend could be replaced by referred. The nomination of Mister Kelly, I think that's more respectful, is that, are you accepting?
I think that, that is a great suggestion, councillor.
And everything else should, should stay the same because it, it glorifies what I've, my talk now. It glorifies what our indigenous, uh, sports people, this was brought to my attention by our indigenous families. We all know what's gonna happen soon, and it's all about acknowledgement, acknowledge, acknowledging some of the things our great. Indigenous people have done, and this is just another way of acceptance and inclusion. Of a great sportsman, and she's been recognised in the Hall of Fame, the Australian Boxing Hall of Fame. The least we can do as a community is to acknowledge him, include him. And celebrate him at the Heffron Centre. But again, it's only a referral, let the panel make its decision. And it's evidence-based, as I talked about Aristotle, this is logos, this is logical, ethos, evidence-based. And it's also, uh, pa- pathos, passion, and also morally, it's the right thing to do. I'll leave it at that, Mister Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, couns- councillor D'Souza, councillor Sid.
I'd just like to commend councillor De Souza on this motion, um, and the recommendation that, um. The nomination, sorry, because not only is Mr. Kelly a proud indigenous man, but. He's actually a very good sportsman, if you look at the list of achievements, and to actually be inducted in the Australian Boxing Hall of Fame. Um, is outstanding, and it's sort of one of those things that unfortunately we've probably let slip. This should have happened maybe years ago, but uh congratulate councillor De Souza on it, and I think it's really worthy of being in the Hall of Fame.
Thank you, um councillor Luxford.
A question through to the relevant officer, um. With no disrespect to Mr. Kelly or to councillor De Souza or Sid here for, um. You know, proposing and seconding, can I just go through to the relevant officer, um. I was under the impression, or actually I was told, that um council officers cannot. Put people up for the Sporting Hall of Fame, and that we have to go through. You know, someone has to nominate through the um correct channels. And it would not, certainly would not be through a notice of motion for recommendation or for. Um, you know, whatever, so can we get that clarified, please?
Um, through to the relevant officer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I need to check whether that, that that criteria is correct, but I believe that is the case.
Okay, thank you, are there any further speakers? Councillor Luxford.
Well, following uh up on that, then how do we proceed with this?
Uh, through to, through to the relevant officer, pending the question on notice, um. Uh, your, your advice as to how the meetings proceed.
Thanks to me, um councillor, if you were to pursue this particular um notice of motion in its current form. And if that was the case, that they actually has to, that we can't actually refer it, it has to come through some of the nomination process, then I'll bring a report back to council. If not, we can continue as we're going now, refer it to a panel, and that panel will make the decisions for the council.
Okay, thank you, uh. Councillor De Souza, oh, yeah, councillor De Souza to close the debate.
Now, this wasn't just a hairy fairy notice of motion, I did actually investigate it through the relevant channels. And I, 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 I was told quite correctly, councillor, you're on, mostly on the judging panel. So you're not in a position to nominate someone, the best way to go about it is to put forward it as a notice of motion. After investigating this and coming back to evidence based ethos, it made sense, and that's what I've done. The key word, I guess, recommend is removed and referred is a more respective tone, respectful tone to the panel. They're making all the decisions, all we're doing is, as someone, I think it was wonderful Danny, said, pointed out, he slipped under the radar. He slipped under the radar, while others have acknowledged him, others have accepted him, we as a community forgot about him. And we're doing this too often, and this is what it's all about, coming up on the fourteenth of October, it's all about acceptors valuing. Correcting the wrongs of the past, thank you.
Thank you, there being no further speakers, I'll now put it, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried, thank you very much. Um, N M sixty three slash twenty three, notice of motion councillor Rosenfeld. Uh, honouring former mayor Ted Singh, councillor Rosenfeld is the mover of the motion, uh seconded by councillor Hamilton.
I, so I brought this um motion on because um, um, as, as all you second and third termers know Ted quite well. Um, he very distinguished service of twenty six years uh on the council. Um, twice as, uh, uh, two terms as mayor, one term as deputy mayor. Uh, he served the community uh for, for all these years very diligently. Uh, majority of that time was, was at Central Ward, hence I'm the, uh, I succeed him as the Central Ward Liberal. And I certainly had very big shoes to uh, to uh, to go into once, once I was elected. Because Ted served the, 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 uh, both the Central Ward community and, and Randwick as a whole. Uh, when he was mayor and deputy mayor with, with great distinction, um, I've also um heard from uh persons of other parties. Including him, Mr. Mayor, um, of, of your uh appreciation of, 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 of him. Uh, and your dealings with him, uh, so, um, yeah, I, I think it's, it's fitting that we, uh, uh, we, um, uh. Honour honour Ted by naming, uh, uh, as I said in the motion, either a, a building or a place after him and, and council come back with a report on that.
Thank you, councillor Hamilton is the seconder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I've known um Ted Singh for a very long time, fifteen years more. And I had the pleasure of serving with him for four years on council. And he mentored me and he helped guide my decision making. He worked very well with uh Labour, the Greens, independents. If anyone at all that's, that, I was gonna say served time with him, ex defence, sorry. Um, but if anyone at all does not believe that Ted is worthy. And I, and, and I'll say this especially those that's, that spent time with him on council. If anyone at all does not think that he's worthy of some kind of acknowledgement, then there's something wrong with them. Because he was about making sure to placate everybody, to make sure that he was. Transparent, to make sure that he's reached out to everybody, um, he was nice to everybody, he was polite to everybody. Um, and I know I'm sounding like this is, you know, some kind of obituary, it's not at all, but the one funny thing I have to say, the time, uh, when I spent with him on council. One comment that he said, that I never forget, is he said, you can't handle the truth, when somebody. He would never, he would never be rude to anyone, and he would never yell at anyone, but there was this one time when someone didn't believe what he was saying. And he said, you can't handle the truth, that's awesome, that alone makes him worthy of some recognition because he is awesome.
Uh, thank you, councillor De Souza.
Mister Mayor, I had the pleasure to serve on this great council with Ted Singh. Ted Singh, as we've been told, was a good and decent man who spoke the truth. He wasn't afraid, even if his party gave him or told him what to do. Often he would stand up and speak the truth, and once I asked him about that, and he said, Noel. I don't think I could walk into that chamber again with my head held high. If I didn't speak the truth, then address what is important to this community. For me, Ted Singh represented. What we celebrate in this country, multiculturalism, he was a simple man, but an honest man. He, we talked about the great President Obama and other leaders before. What Ted Singh said to the world and to the people of Randwick every time he did a citizen's subservency was. We can, I can, if I did it, you can do it, and for that alone. He should be praised and celebrated, as I said, the man I knew is a man I shall always remember. A man who had good values, a man who loved Australia and loves Australia. A man who loved this council, led it on two occasions in difficult times, but for me, he was an inspirational leader. And in, in me, he instilled the desire to serve the people of Randwick in the highest. And best possible way as its mayor, and he and his group gave me the opportunity to do just that. For that, I'm eternally grateful, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, um councillor Veach, and then I have to talk councillor Nielsen.
Um, I'll be moving an amendment, if Mr. Kelly can bring that up, please. Um, councillors, I don't disagree with anything that's been said. Um, I too am incredibly fond of, of Ted, of former councillor, uh, Singh. Um, and I have huge respect uh for him, and I'm really fond, and he was always very respectful, very kind. Uh, he was a gentleman, um, however, I guess I do have, uh, I guess I think this needs to be a little bit arms, arms length. Um, we do have a lot of places named after former councillors and mayors in this L G A, and they're nearly all male. So I guess I would like to get some kind of report, you know, about the place names by their gender. How many uh First Nations people have place names after them, reasons for naming. And then also maybe have a panel that actually looks at these, and then maybe uh this, uh, you know, uh. Ted could be nominated through this panel, and it would be done at arms length, um. So not intended in any way to, to disrespect uh Ted, because I like him very, very much. But we do have a lot of former mayors as well, and there just has to be, I think, a little bit of a process rather than a council motion. So, um, I don't know if uh council would be willing to, to consider uh this amendment. And actually put a nomination for, for uh for councillor Singh uh through this other process, and for it to be considered. By an independent panel of staff and maybe some community residents or something like that, thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh seconded by councillor Nielsen, councillor Nielsen, do you wish to speak to it?
Uh, yes, I do, um, I must say I was flabbergasted to know that in fact we do not have a naming, um. Policy um programme, because I was under the impression that uh we had, that council had, it was before my time, but. Council had a policy that um council would only name places after someone was deceased. Um, well, she was, it might have come in after the naming of the library, um. Noel, councillor De Souza, or it might have um been in conjunction with that, but there was a reason that that was made an exception, I understood. Was because she was the first woman uh mayor of Randwick, and so it seemed like it seemed inappropriate. I was on council, you weren't on council when that all happened, however, I just think that, um, the amendment that we have here from. Councillor Veach, I'm happy to support, perhaps I would just, um, councillor Veach, where we say in point B. The report also investigates establishing a naming panel might be.
Yes.
Um, to consider, or a panel to consider, sorry, a consider. Uh, yeah, to, and to establish a, a naming um policy. Because I think it's a policy that we actually need, because I think otherwise, I mean, we sit around the table here, and we're gonna be making decisions theoretically. On who's going to be um naming this or naming that, well, depending on the majority in, around the horseshoe, and as we know, that can change. Then it runs at an awful risk of being very political, whereas we should be trying to be apolitical, um. And so, and I think we do need a little bit of time to go into working out what would be an appropriate um. Policy wording and, and so on, and, um. Yeah, so I'm supporting this amendment um to um councillor Rosenfeld's motion, not to, um. To say that I don't think, as other people have said, that councillor, um, Singh deserves some um acknowledgement and recognition. That's not what it's all about, it's a matter of that we need to be consistent, um, and we need to have a policy. Um, and I just think that's something that we need to establish, so that's why I hope others will support the amendment.
Thank you, uh councillor Olive, on the amendment.
Uh, yes, I, I'd like to support the amendment, just, just pointing out that, um, uh, obviously, you know, sort of Ted Singh. Um, uh, represented the uh council with ex- uh distinction, but also Murray Mattson did, who. Uh, became a councillor at exactly the ti- same time, left at exactly the same time, so they served the same length of time. Was mayor twice, the same as Ted Singh, and was deputy mayor once, the same as Ted Singh. So there's no reason why Ted Singh should get the, you know, buildings named after him and not Murray Mattson. And that comes back to, you know, sort of, we need a policy, you know, sort of, and we need some, uh, you know, sort of, uh, some other way of determining. You know, these things.
Uh, councillor, uh Chapel.
Sorry, just briefly, I know this has gone on for a while, um, I just completely agree with the need for a kind of policy and procedure, and it is. I think quite unusual that we don't have something like that, because place names are something that are usually quite highly regulated, and there are. You know, many steps to go through, I know I've tried to change the name with geographical names board before, and it's like a whole thing. Um, the other thing I'd like to say is just, it's the nature of, of this place, uh, that we're gonna be really aware of each other's achievements. But not necessarily be reflecting the achievements of our community at the same level, and I think that the benefit of having a kind of committee looking at that more generally. Is rather than just honouring each other, which may have a lot of merit, we also have that opportunity to think about who in the community. Might be appropriately reflected um back to the community, um, and the final thing I'd say is, um. You know, I, I don't think we should be looking at this as, you know, every councillor needs to have their name on something, or even somebody like Ted, like Ted's quite a humble person. Um, and I think we all reflect on what a privilege it is to serve in this place, and that is kind of the honour in and of itself. It's not about then also having your name on a plaque as well, and so I think we should, um, you know, be careful about, uh. Pounding ourselves on the back too much, because it, it really already is such a privilege to be here.
Thank you, are there any further speakers on the amendment? Okay, there being no further speakers on the amendment, we'll now put it. Uh, I'm sorry, I, I didn't, I, I didn't think so, sorry, um. All those in favour of the amendment? All those against? There's been a request for a division, is there? Well, there's now been a call for, there's now been a call for two, uh, from two councillors for a division. Uh, in, in the, on the amendment, Veach, Nielsen, uh, all those in favour of the amendment, please raise your hand. Councillor Pandelfini, councillor Nielsen, councillor Veach, councillor Chapel, councillor Olive, councillor Wilson. All those against, councillor Hamilton, councillor Hay, councillor Luxford, councillor Rosenfeld, councillor. McCafferty, councillor Burst, councillor De Souza, and the mayor Parker, I declare the amendment lost. We now return to the substantive debate, um, are there any further speakers?
Put it, I don't wanna close it.
Okay, thank you, we'll now put it, uh, all those in favour? All those against? I declare, I declare that carried, thank you. Um, N M sixty four slash twenty three. Uh, notice of motion from councillor Veach, before we do that, um, could we please bring back in uh councillor Sid?
Actually, I'd like to move a procedural motion, uh, given that it's getting quite late, to move speeches to two minutes, please.
There's procedural motion for two minutes, is there a seconder? Uh, second to councillor Burst, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carry, I declare that carried, um, thank you, um. Councillor Veach, uh, could you please uh outline what it is that you're moving, and I'll call for a second. Okay, seconded by councillor. Olive, second councillor Olive, Veach, Olive.
Uh, thank you, obviously I'm moving as per the business papers, uh councillors, we, we, we've got a bit of an issue in that. One of the, sort of, the main, uh, super fund utilised by, uh, local government staff. Uh, is currently under investigation by, by ASIC for corporate greenwashing. Um, I've raised issues of greenwashing, uh, both here at council and on the L G New South Wales Board.
Point of order, the clock is from the five minute, not the, yeah.
Uh, thank you, please continue, the clock is irrelevant, councillor Veach has two minutes, thank you.
Um, this is a really serious issue, A- Active Super has, you know, over thirteen. Billion dollars in funds, these are members' funds, members' uh retirement savings. And when you are, when you, you're essentially purchasing a product, when you're purchasing, when you're investing in super. You're saying, I'm going to invest in this particular fund, uh, hopefully because it aligns with my values. And if, and if a fund is presenting itself in a certain way, it has to actually stick by that, and this is not what is happening. So Active Super was first, uh, there were issues first raised in Four Corners in February to do with, um. Carbon credits, but that really isn't the main, the main issue, um. We cannot let this go by, this is not, I came across the, across this buried in a report. Um, in the L G New South Wales Business Papers, everything that is on this motion is publicly available. So the background is literally cut and pasted from the ASIC media report, word for word. So I'm not printing anything here that is defamatory or in any way confidential, but. It is essentially just saying that we write to Active. It is essentially just saying that we write to Active Super and LG New South Wales requesting that. Members and councils be informed, uh and any actions uh that Active uh. Super intends to take to actually update its website or actually divest. Um and any financial impacts on members. Now, I've been informed that uh, you know, the insurance. Active Super's insurance will cover this, but all I can say is hopefully they'll have a better luck. Making good on their insurance claim than than the rest of the people of New South Wales. Can I just have one? Sorry, two minutes is just, can I have one more minute?
Um, there's been a request for an extension, moved councillor, um uh. Sed, Dusser, all those in favour, all those against? Declare that carried, thank you for one minute.
You, I'll be very brief. Look, there was a report in a paper yesterday saying that. Almost almost a hundred percent of New South Wales residents have been affected by natural disasters in the last twelve months. So uh this was reported in the Sydney Morning Herald, there was quite a detailed report. Um some of us uh went to the uh Alga Conference in Forbes. Uh and we had a great presentation from uh Shane Fitzsimons and that was all about uh disasters. A hundred and twenty eight, all one hundred and twenty eight LGA's have been affected by disasters in the last couple of years. Um, it's a false economy to be investing. In fossil fuels and some of these other terrible entities. So again, please support, I hope you can support the motion. Is essentially just asking to be updated on something that is really important to um this sector. Thank you.
Thank you. Seconder of the motion?
I'd just quickly say that um, you know, sort of uh we, uh greenwashing is one of the um uh the things that, you know, sort of is. A modern scourge and we've just had the new head of the A triple C. And she's made the uh her mission to try and, you know, sort of um to uh um root out greenwashing. I think that, you know, sort of one of the best uh um uh remedies to try and um. Uh try and rectify misleading misleading uh advertising and representation is transparency and that's what this motion goes to. And so I would um, I commend it.
Thank you. Um, uh are there any further speakers? Uh I just have one question through to the move of the motion. Um has this motion or a similar motion gone to any other body that you're aware of? No?
I did put a motion up for the local government uh New South Wales Conference, uh however, that actually only last month. Uh but I was not aware at that time of the ASIC proceedings.
Okay.
So that was a more general motion about greenwashing, but um this is simply just asking for uh. For councils and members to be updated.
Okay, thank you. There being no further speakers, uh I will now put it. All those in favour? All those against? I think it is, okay, there's been a request from a division from Veach. Is there a second to the call for a division? Second councillor uh Chapel. Uh all those in favour, please raise your hand. We have councillor Pandelfini, councillor Veach. Councillor Chapel, councillor Olive, councillor Sed, all those against? Uh councillor Hamilton, Luxford, Rosenfeld, uh McCafferty, Wilson, Burst, Dusser and Parker. I declare the motion lost. Thank you. Okay. Thanks. We now move to NM sixty five twenty three. Notice of motion from councillor Luxford to reinstate roundabouts in Kensington and Kingsford. We'll just, what, we'll.
I I did it while walking in, that counts.
I'd love to say that was the case, but I did ke-.
Point of order, Mr Mayor, the people that had left the room had not been seated before you started to debate the notice of motion. In fairness.
Okay, all right. You know how we're gonna do it? We're gonna do it. NM sixty five twenty three, move councillor Luxford, seconded.
Second, second, second.
Seconded councillor Haye. There you go. All right, councillor Luxford.
Basically, I think this motion speaks for itself. Um. The roundabouts were fought for to uh for so long in our. Area of Doncaster Avenue and Day and Bar- uh. Barker and Houston with the construction of. The bicycle tracks which seem to be now haphazard because as I came down Doncaster Avenue today. Part of it on the northern end doesn't seem to exist. Or I missed it, I don't know. And then it's sort of goes a little bit more. It's a total disaster. Um if you travel along Houston Road and get to Barker Street. At any time of the day, there's an accident waiting to happen. With the removal of the roundabout at Barker Street. No one knows which way, who should be going first. Um. I've got residents who on Saturday told me they're petrified to come out of their driveways because. They don't know where they're going and what they're gonna hit and what they may not hit. One lady tries to drive into her driveway now and try and turn in her backyard so that she can then. You know, be coming out facing oncoming whatever and she says, I'm petrified to drive. And when we get to Houston Road and Barker, it's a mess. The, so I'm calling for the reinstatement of the roundabouts considering the fact that the. Bicycle track isn't gonna go any further than Barker Street. It's not being built, probably will never be built. And. All of this, like, uh bi- uh bike. Yes.
Seconded councillor Sed, all those in favour, all those against?
All of the construction of these bicycle tracks has left total devastation in our streets. It's left our streets upside down and all over the place. Day Avenue is another mess. And all I got told by our um traffic manager was that bicycles can't go round roundabouts. I will reiterate, the former premier of New South Wales managed to go round the roundabout. On Day Avenue and waved to me at the same time and say good morning on her way to Parliament House. If she could go round a roundabout, why can't any other cyclist do it? Now, um it's important that we get these back because the traffic. The disasters, the whole thing, it's a mess. It's contributing to the mess. That Kensington and Kingsford have become and we want them back.
Thank you. Councillor Hayes, the seconder of the motion.
Um, thank you. I'd like to uh echo the sentiments of councillor Luxford. Um very briefly, uh can I ask a question uh? That uh, I I did have an idea that the original plan for the c- the cycleway also called for the removal of the. Uh roundabout at uh Houston and Borradale to be removed. Um would uh councillor Luxford uh ex- uh uh like an extra sentence added to point A?
But the br- it's not going that far now.
Um, I'd like to ask the question through the mayors, the director of city services. Uh has, do we have official confirmation that the cycleway project has been cancelled south of Park- Barker Street?
Through to the director of city services.
It was here. We got it in our, we got a letter.
Thank you. Through yourself, uh Mr Mayor, we have been advised by Transport for New South Wales that the, at this stage of project. Uh will not be progressing beyond Barker. Uh we are meeting with Transport for New South Wales this Friday to discuss cycleways in more detail.
Thank you.
Okay, then I'll um withdraw the uh a talk of the Houston Borradale roundabout and I, it's whatever. I suggest everyone support this motion because we need to ensure that we have good uh free flowing traffic throughout the entire. Entirety of Randwick City and that, and goo- and good traffic benefits everyone. Cyclists and murderers, pedestrians, everyone.
In strategic deference to councillor Sed, councillor Sed, and then I'll go to you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um I just, there's a couple of things I'd like to say and I've got a question to ask councillor Luxford. Um, I remember in the previous term, councillor Luxford and myself. Kept asking and begging not to remove the roundabouts and there has to be a better way. Because you don't have to just be a resident of Kensington to be using those roundabouts. We all know it's a shortcut past um Anzac Parade. We all know that that's where people go, they park in Houston Road to go to use the shops because the light rail took away the parking. On the Anzac Parade, so everyone goes on Houston Road and parks there. And without the um. Soon as you turn into Barker or any of those streets, you can't turn left or right because of stop signs, because cars are just going everywhere. So it was always gonna be a disaster waiting to happen and unfortunately it has. So my, my point to councillor Luxford is. That rather than a report to come back to with the options, I don't think there is an option. I think we should just ask for them to immediately come back as soon as possible. Um T F New South Wales, I don't know, they actually took them away before they even started working on the. Our cycleway and then they said, we're not building the cycleway. So they're the ones who did it, they should just put it back. And then when if they ever do build the cycleway, then they can take them away. But they shouldn't have, they've put the cart before the horse. So all I ask is that we immediately put them back because it is very dangerous along there. And as it is, as I said, there's honestly something really bad's gonna happen. It needs to happen immediately. Even if they're only temporary, but something that we need roundabouts and not stop signs.
Councillor Leach.
Um look, I I will not be voting in support of this motion despite the the cry for more roundabouts. We do still have a roundabout at the corner of Houston Road and Borradale. And you can safely turn left uh from, if you want to go in the other direction, you can safely turn left in from. Day Avenue uh into Houston. Councillors. And I'll also focus this for the councillors who live in in South Ward and Central Ward. Who have been very strongly advocating for the Anzac Parade bike path. If you don't get this uh section finished, it it's it's actually the um. The Anzac Parade cycleway that will end up being a cycleway to nowhere. Because, well, I don't, I wouldn't say that because I don't think any cycleway is a cycleway to nowhere. But the the vision of this. Was that eventually you'd be able to go from La Perouse all the way up to to Allison Road, up Anzac. And then up Houston Road and Doncaster, Allison, and then where you wanted to go. It would be absolutely amazing, a game changer. As I said, most residents in our LGA at times walk places, at times drive places. And at times cycle places. And we all deserve to be looked after. At whatever mode of transport, active or otherwise, that we choose to to use. Um that Barker Street, it is dangerous, but why encourage more people to use Barker Street between Cottonham and Houston is incredibly narrow. It's a rat run. We actually don't, once you put the roundabout back, it's literally saying, yes, go, go and use the rat run. Like, people along Cottonham Avenue, Eastern Avenue are constantly complaining about people speeding through there. Rat running and then they go up Barker if they're wanting to go east, that's the way they're going. At the moment, with the, without the roundabout there, there's actually a really good, may I have another minute, please?
Uh, there's been a request for an extension, moved uh Nielsen, uh Chapel is in favour, was against, declare the carried, thank you.
We should be encouraging people who aren't local residents to use the main roads, to use Anzac Parade and Gardners Road. Not rat running through Houston. That's why it's busy. It's because it's not, because of the local residents. Who have got plenty of options. It's because of people coming down from Barker, from Gardners Road and so on. And using that as a rat run. So I'm not against, like, I I think actually it's good that the the Borradale one is still there because it is really useful. But there are other options. Uh and at the moment, the cyclists, if we, if we get rid of that pedestrian crossing. And I can never vote to get rid of a pedestrian crossing, will be, uh. They, that is gonna be incredibly dangerous because they're gonna have to cross, if they're going southbound, they're gonna have to cross back over the other side of the road. And they won't have a pedestrian crossing to actually get across there. Um, you know, we've seen so many um of the poor delivery drivers killed. Now, A, it's because of their terrible working conditions, and it's B, it's because they're on the roads a lot, and then just one day it's gonna, seriously.
Thank you. Councillor Olive.
Uh, just a a question because I'm a little bit confused. Um. Uh it's, it mentioned section three, which is not going ahead of the the cycleway, but section two is going ahead of the cycleway. Um and uh but the intersections mentioned are uh at Day Avenue and at Barker Street. Um are they inside section two or inside section three? The se- are they inside the section that's going to be. Um the cycleway completed or they're the bit that's incomplete?
Through to the director of city services.
Through yourself, uh Mr Mayor, I believe the the area is nominated, or the street is nominated in the motion uh inside section two. Uh and transport uh is committed to completing up to section two. Section three is Barker Street further south.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Luxford, do you wish to close the debate? Okay, thank you. We'll now put the motion. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Okay, councillor Veach has requested that her name is recorded against in the minutes. Okay, thank you. Um, we now move on to uh NM sixty six uh slash twenty three. Uh moved councillor Burst, seconded councillor Sed. Um councillor Burst.
The missing path to Laperouz Museum. Laperouz Museum is one of the jewels in Randwick City's crown. And one of the uh key locations and a beautiful location in Southwood. The Laperouz Museum is uh is bounded by the um. Laperouz Monument and also the Abbey Reservoir Tomb. And there's a missing, missing path. And this is a, this simple seventeen.
Okay, thank, thank you. Please continue councillor Burst.
Um and this final seventeen metres would complete the path and allow access to the museum. And to the two monuments. So I actively am ask you to support this motion. Um we have a lot of visitors to Laperouz Museum and um. Also the curator at Laperouz Museum would be um, would very happy if this happened as well, she'd be quite excited. Um especially if we've got wet weather, uh grass gets a little bit long. So, thank you.
Um through to the um move of the motion, before I move to the second up, I just have a point of clarification for you. Uh under the source of funding, it identifies a source of funding to be budgeted in twenty three, twenty four. Is it the intention for it to be the tw- the financial year twenty four, twenty five, noting that we're in twenty three, twenty four now? Okay, thank you. Yeah, I I suspect it, if your intent, your intention, okay. Through to, so to, just to clarify, that's what you're seeking, to move twenty four, twenty five? Okay, thank you. Uh councillor Sed is the seconder.
They should have fought harder, councillor Burst. Anyway, um. Mr Mayor, this, this actually is very, it's very minor and it's very small, but it's very important. Um for years, people have always said that nine out of ten people come from across the road at Anzac Parade from the shops over to the museum. They're either at the boathouse and they want to come and see something at the museum. Um virtually everyone comes from that side of the road to this side of the road. And unfortunately, there's no way that you can get across there without having to walk through the grass, which. We've just had two years of sort of a rainy season and it's been virtually mud and high grass. Um the elderly and people who can't sort of walk, um disabled just can't get there. So. This is very much needed and it'll help improve the visitation to the museum. Um it's a shame it couldn't happen any quicker, but it will be a great asset to the museum and there's no point waiting for the master plan as well, this just needs to happen.
Thank you. Councillor Dusser?
Mr Mayor, if Laperouz Museum is the jewel of the crown. Then I should claim to be the jeweller that put that crown, that jewel in the crown, because I remember that fateful day. When Minister Gabriel Lupton sat across from me or next to me and we signed that document. But that didn't just happen. It happened because the general manager of the day, he's back, Mr Brownley, and another one of our officers, Alan Bright, negotiated a deal. That got us something most people wouldn't have. They got us a forty-two year lease. But uh that's the story, the narrative. But what I want to say is, I fully support this notice of motion. I know I was gonna ask the councillor if he could consider. While we're in the, in this mode, I've noticed from the tower to the main road or even a connecting to the museum. One day I was invited there, it was raining, there was a big puddle of. to the main road or even a connecting to the museum, one day I was invited there, it was raining, there was a big puddle of pond. I, it reminded me of the old moats in the old days around a castle. If we could consider while we're doing this, and Mister councillor Burst, I hope you can accept the amendment, uh, uh, to, 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 to build a pathway. So it connects the museum to the tower, because sometimes we take visitors there, or a, a pathway, a, a concrete pathway that connects it to the main road. It'll just make it a bit more complete. Are you happy with that?
Um, yes councillor D'Souza. Um, there is, um, there is a, an access point. There is an access point from the, uh, toilets, um, close to the toilets, it actually goes across uh, the roadway there, so you could just extend that section of road, maybe put a, a little a little, little meandering pathway through to the, uh, through the, to the tower.
Um, through, through to the general manager, um, I just have a point of clarification. Um, I'm led to believe that there are, there may be some mittens which are present through that route, and whether or not in, um, his interpretation of this particular motion, that there would just be consideration of the potential for that in any, uh, future, um, re, report.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, understanding what councillor D'Souza was after, it's, it's simply for us to consider it in a future report. To go back to council regarding that particular one, to make sure there are no mittens there.
Okay, in, in light of that, I'm more than satisfied. Um, are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Burst, do you wish to close the debate? Okay, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried, thank you. Uh, N M s, uh, okay, N M sixty-eight slash twenty-three, notice mo, motion from councillor Sedd, appreciation event for Mister Gary Lovell, uh, P S M, move councillor Sedd, seconded councillor Luxford.
Uh, basically, just to wrap it up, Mister Mayor, i- if you read through it, uh, we've had such a, a, a very true and meaningful situation where we've had a sister city that really does do that in its, and has a relationship in a very meaningful way. Um, Mister Lovell was instrumental in bringing kids. I remember when the kids actually came. They stayed at the house just over here, they came to a council meeting, we showed them around, they saw what a meeting was like, they had a fantastic time. Our lifeguards took them down the beach, they, um, brought out Larry the lifeguard, they showed them around, some have never seen water before. It was fantastic. Then some of our kids from Randwick went out to Tamora, got to see what farms are like. So this is what sis, being a sister city is all about, and Gary Lovell started that. He's been there for a very long time. We've actually even s, uh, swapped council offices. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but Mister Clark, you went out there as a young engineer and did some work out there. I think I crossed the bridge that you built or whatever, but anyway, um, it, it, he's done a fantastic job. And as I said, um, the, the, Tamora's always been very proud of, of having Randwick as their sister city. We've always been very proud to have them here. It's been a fantastic relationship and, and that relationship is based on the good work of Gary Lovell. So I'd just like to think that we do thank him in the most appropriate way.
Councillor Luxford is the seconder, then I'll go to councillor D'Souza, then I saw councillor.
Just briefly reiterating what councillor Sedd, um, has mentioned, um.
Councillor Luxford, please continue.
Um, uh, I've spent a lot of time down in Tamora myself through various, um, uh, uh, various functions. Uh, we had the opportunity to take down some Greek dances and have a big Greek day and, um, lighten up Tamora and it was, it was a great event that filled, um, filled the, uh, hall and, um, yeah, so I've spent many great times, uh, good times down in Tamora and, uh, Gary Lovell certainly did an excellent job down there and he was always accommodating to anyone from Randwick. Um, who wanted to spend time in Tamora or go down, have a look around. He was always there for you. So, um, I think it's only fitting that with our sister city relationship, we, um, give him a little tribute, the Randwick Quay.
Thank you very much, uh, councillor D'Souza.
Mister Mayor, I want to compliment councillor Sedd for what he's put forward. You know, it's so important for smaller communities to feel that sense of belonging and connection. And councillor Sedd actually did it particularly well in his term. It did have many opportunities because of Covid and that you yourself, Mister Mayor, opened up so many things, I've seen your name uh, uh, on more plaques than I've seen in the newspaper. But that's, that's for another day. But councillor Sedd didn't have that opportunity because of Covid. But what he did, I, I, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm thinking even that scholarship that we talked or voted on today. But this mayor, Rick Furman, I think his name, he's, he's quite a legend in his lifetime. He always tells me about councillor Sedd. Actually, I was very jealous of the way he would praise councillor Sedd. And he said councillor Sedd came and he helped lift our community. And I think that might have been after the fires or this or that, or maybe after the floods. I don't know. But all he kept telling me was about this wonderful mayor of Randwick. I was the mayor of Randwick, there were many others. But the fact is, I didn't do what councillor Sedd did. He built bridges. And of course, I can't forget the famous general manager either, because at the end of the day, it takes two to tango. We might want to do things or councillors, but the general managers make things happen. So I'm all for this. I'm all to support this Gary. I've met him and he's always very nice and humble and polite. But as I said, how we, how we celebrate what he's done, I'll leave it to others. But I think it's a good notice of motion and I compliment councillor Sedd for doing it. But as I said, Rick Furman, whatever his name, has always said, oh, that Danny Sedd, that Danny Sedd. So he must have left a good impression on hi, that community. Thank you, councillor Sedd.
Thank you, councillor Hamilton.
Thank you. I commend this, um, notice of motion as well. I would like to put forward an amendment. And, don't roll your eyes at me. And the amendment is, um, that while we're undertaking this, this event, would it be possible for the, the, the general manager, the mayor and, and anyone else who might, um, think it relevant to record a video message for Margaret Martin? It's Margaret Martin, she's the reason why we have Tamora as our sister city. And it's a connection through family that led to the nomination of Tamora. Um, and given her, um, relationship with council, I think that it would be fitting for us to record a very, uh, um, you know, gracious uh, thank you to her for us to then take to her daughter, Carolyn Martin, um, for her to play for Margaret.
Thank you, councillor Sedd. Do you accept that amendment?
Actually, Mister Mayor, when I was in Tamora at Mister, uh, Graham Sinclair's, uh, the deputy mayor's house, I, I heard the story about how Margaret Martin and the relationship started. So yes, I do totally do it. I actually just like to note too that I actually had fresh lamb that night. I don't think I've ever had it ever again. But anyway, um.
Okay, um, there being no further speakers. I, I take it that councillor Sedd accepts the amendment, there being no further speakers. I take it you don't wish to close the debate. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. We now move into confidential session. Could we please turn off the recording and close the doors?
Always, 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 always there. When I call you, you come running. Yes, so come on, come on, come on, come on, take me with you, take me with you. I don't wanna stay around when you're gone. Take me with you, take me with you. I don't wanna stay around when you're gone. Take me with you, take me with you. I don't wanna stay around when you're gone. Take me with you, take me with you. I don't wanna stay around when you're gone.
Thank you. Um, the outcome of C C twenty three slash twenty three, the Randwick City Sports Awards, uh, was carried as per the business paper. C S thirty nine slash twenty three, Coogee Beach Lower Promenade amenities, external door replacement, uh, was carried as per the business paper. C S forty slash twenty three, tender for the Stori Street Depots was carried unanimously. Uh, C O forty nine slash twenty three, tender for the provision and delivery of hardwell, uh, hardware, uh, protective clothing and other items, uh, was carried, uh, unanimously. Uh, there being no further business, I declare, uh, the nineteenth of September, ordinary council meeting closed. Thank you very much councillors, you are all relatively well behaved. Thank you.